Zero degrees and fourteen below at the windshield. It was just like.
Starting.
That's funny, get off an airplane and weather like that.
Funny us flying there, there's like one hundred and eighty open seats on the plane. Like no one flies them in it's over in January.
Yeah.
I'd like to call the Tuesday, January twenty first, twenty twenty five Island City Council meeting to order. Janice, could you please call roll?
Councilmember Atlin.
Here.
Councilmember LeFane. Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maida.
Here.
Mayor Rhodes.
Here. Will you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? May get approval of the agenda.
Like to make a change to the order of the agenda if possible. Like to move. The oral report by finance manager number nine up to number one. Reason being is we're being asked to vote on a bunch of financial issues and like to hear his report first.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Guys have it, so we're moving item, what number was it?
Nine. Number nine to number one.
Number nine to.
Of the regular agenda.
Two, one. Okay, remind me if I screw that up, okay. Alrighty, we have no presentations or announcements, announcements. Open up for public comment, anyone want to public on items that are not on the agenda?
The closed session had some things about the Han organization, there's nothing on the tonight's agenda about it. Is that going to be addressed?
No, it was in closed session.
So there's no information on a golf course tonight?
No. Any other public comment? Close public comment. Move on to the consent calendar, can I get a motion to approval of the consent calendar?
Um, I'd like to pull item one for discussion.
Do we have a second on pulling item one?
I don't think you need one, but I'll second it.
We have a first and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Do we need to do a vote on that?
No.
You don't, should we?
Pulling consent items.
Okay. Do you want to discuss it now, or do you want to move it to the regular agenda?
You wanted to pull the minutes?
Yes. Item number one.
Um, you can pull and I'll talk about it.
Okay, uh, November nineteenth minutes are not included. They weren't in my agenda. December third is included, but December nineteenth is not there. Um.
It's true.
As opposed in on, first of all, I have a question. Are we utilizing artificial intelligence now to summarize our minutes?
Asking me?
Yeah. So you're not using AI?
How would I even know how to use that?
Well. It's just a program.
About that, no.
But our, our Civic Plus has it available. My question is, um, because the minutes are now sort of storytelling and giving opinion. Um, that's why I asked. Um, I think there was, uh, one for public comment and it said, the majority of public comment agreed with such and such and such. That's not factual, that's an opinion. Um, so that's why I. It reads like a story, which is what AI does. And I know it's allowed. Um, I just think if we are using it, it should be disclosed that we're using artificial intelligence.
I think we're using real intelligence, we got Janice.
Um, and then on the minutes. There are a couple errors. Under item H. Consent calendar. We discussed the warrants, uh, specifically animal control came up and Chief Alfred is. Uh, quoted as saying that the city has charged eighty six dollars per call. I think it was eight hundred and sixty per call. Is that correct, Chief?
Yeah, it's, uh, eight sixty two.
Eight hundred and sixty, not eighty six dollars, okay. Um, and last on item. Two, which was approval of West Joe's task orders, I think I emailed you on this, Janice. Uh, I abstained from the second vote, I did not vote in favor. Um, but you have me in voting in favor.
Because I listened to the minutes and it did have you voting yes.
Okay, well. I'd like to listen.
To the attorney, you would not be allowed to change it unless it comes back and re-vote. On the item.
Yeah. I did not vote yes on that.
I can send you a copy of the.
Yeah.
Tape.
That'd be great.
We'll confirm it.
Listen to it.
Sure.
Yeah, because, uh, Mayor Rhodes voted no, and so did I.
We should, we should have the tape.
Okay, great. Um, those are the only things I have on those items.
Okay, can we get an approval of the consent calendar with, uh, changes?
Without the November nineteenth minutes? If they're not there.
I'll stick in that, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Guys have it. Uh, public hearing, we have none. Moving on to the regular agenda item, we're moving nine to one, oil report by financial manager Mike.
Good evening, uh, there it goes. We have a little presentation here, it's just a few slides. It's really.
Can you speak in the microphone a little closer?
Thank you. Guys hear me okay?
That's better, thanks, sure.
Alright, so first I wanted to, uh, go into the next slide. I wanted to give you a little bit of a tracking of where we are revenue wise in the city. Now, all those little lines near the bottom are various sources of revenue that we have. The largest of which is taxes based, and that's the second to highest line you see there in blue. The very, very top line is if you summed it all together, the total revenue of the city. And as you can see, it sort of peaked and it's starting to come back down. Now, of course, we're only six months into the fiscal year. So there's a projected amount based on revenue that is still expected, and that's that dashed line going off to the side, but still. We have a trend starting here. We are going revenue downward. Now, this wouldn't be bad in some cases if you had expected money around the corner, we do not. In fact, some of these peaks, as they've existed historically. I don't know if it was expected that money was going to come in, or if it was luck, but there was COVID money that came in, and there was a lot of developer fees that came in. Those have since. You know, either dried up or aren't coming in at the same rate. Revenue is going down. And that's what the big line at the top is really the indication of. Our next slide. Is the expenses of, uh, the city's general fund. Uh, there it goes. Same concept here is that we have a bunch of lines at the bottom that are the different sources of expenses. And if you were to sum them all up, it comes out to the large blue line. Same concept, there's six months left to the year, fiscal year, and so there's a projected line of, uh, where our expenses are. And we are slightly growing with our expenses, but. In the last five years, we've grown about seven point one four percent with our expenses. The rate of inflation has come out closer to twenty one point fourteen cumulatively. So our rate of expenses is far less than the rate of inflation, which really means that you're getting the most bang for your buck here. We're being very efficient with our dollars, now of course, there's always work to be done to make things more efficient, but. We're actually not getting more expensive to run compared to inflation. Next slide. This is the one that's really important. So the green line at the top represents that revenue trend. Same thing as the very first, uh, graph. Now, it's projected go a little higher than where it's actually showing, because we have six more months of expected. The red is expenses, same logic. You'll see that I've circled an area somewhere between, uh. Let's see, somewhere between. What is that, uh, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three fiscal year and twenty twenty three, twenty four fiscal year? That is a point which we've crossed over where expenses are greater than revenue, and you can see that the more dramatic twist here is it's revenue dropping. Once you start going this direction, it is, you're, you're losing money year over year. Reserves dry off, you start going the road of Sutter Creek. We're not that close yet, but this is a very bad trend, and it's now been going on for about two and a half years, three by the end of the fiscal year. This is not necessarily bad budgeting, but it does mean that we, there's one thing that pulls you out of this, revenue. If you do not generate that revenue, you don't offset your general costs, it's all downward. The second area I've circled on here is, and it, it, you can't quite see it so well, because it, it, compared to the whole budget, it's not incredibly big. But that is your net line, uh, expenses and revenue averaged together, that going down, bad. But there is a slight uptick in that area I've circled, and that is all of a sudden, we started managing our, uh, reserves better. We started generating real interest off of them. Before that, it wasn't something that was really considered by previous leadership. Now that it is, it's a slight uptick, but overall, we're still in a downward spiral, revenue lower than expenses. Again, our growth in expenses is far less than the rate of inflation, we're being fairly efficient, but of course, there's always ways to improve it. But the only way you're really going to pull out of this is a change to revenue. I just want to stress that very heavily. And I want to remind people. That there are policies that help this and hurt this. A great example is, um, you know, having to make, uh, POs for expenses, it's not bad to have a PO policy. It's not, it's just keeping things in check. But there is a point that it's doing more harm to you than good. If you start lowering those amounts to such a point that man hours being spent on POs is more than the worth of the PO itself. Then you're really just paying people's salaries to not do a lot to gain you money. Also, those sorts of policies do nothing to our budget, because those policies are all based off of approved budgets. So since the dollar's already approved, all you're really doing is putting more paperwork in place. Of what was already approved to be spent. Now we start spending outside that budget, well, we got to bring that up to you right away, we got to get your approval. That's more than paperwork. So when you, later on in the night, it's one of the later agenda things, you, they'll be going over and reviewing the policy on these POs. I just want to remind you that nothing you vote on with that is going to change the fact that what you really need is revenue. Not more bureaucracy. Doesn't mean it's bad to have oversight, maybe there is a number in there that does make sense, and you just want to keep oversight. That's your own, uh, prerogative. But stress that policy like that is just increasing man hours bureaucracy and not helping revenue. Which right now, we're starting the death spiral. That's where I own currently is. Any quick questions while I'm up here?
How's their outstanding debt?
So if you added up all the debt as it currently exists, it outweighs our current reserves.
Yeah, it's about eleven million dollars.
Uh, it's some things, it's a little higher than that, because there's liabilities for. For instance, if every employee was to be dissolved from the government right away, you have to pay off certain kinds of.
Right, OPEC and.
So it, it does exceed reserves, and if we don't change that, we will be literally upside down. The thing we have going for us in regards to that particular issue is it's not all due tomorrow. So as long as we are cash flow positive, you pull yourself out of this spiral. But right now, it's not just a trend line, a trend line would be even worse if everything was due tomorrow. Good question.
The inter-fund borrowing.
Yes.
Is it three million? That is where departments are loaning other departments money, very little has been paid back.
I've seen that, um, I'm having to dig into that with not just, uh, my own work and the staff we have, but some of our predecessors that are still working with us.
Yeah.
Jane. It, the way that it was coded sometimes, it's hard to track exactly how much has been paid back, but so far from what we're finding, it agrees with what you're saying.
Three million, and that was the audit of twenty twenty.
Oh, no, I'm not saying the, the total, I'm saying the not paid back, like you're saying, very little.
Very little has been paid back, so departments continue to borrow against each other and not pay the debt back.
In some cases.
Yeah.
In some cases, we are seeing stuff start to be paid back, it just may have been coded in a way that's not easy to find yet, so this will take further investigation on my part. But from the questions I've asked and what we've seen so far, I'd say that agrees with you fairly well.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, that debt doesn't go away.
It does not.
We can't negotiate it, and it rises every year.
In some cases, you guys, uh, not you guys, the city has, uh, when it was set up, allowed it to happen at though a very low interest and interest rate. So even at one percent, if it's not paid back, you know, we're just racking up debt on ourselves.
Right. Yeah, that's a concern.
I got a quick comment, um, I met with Michael a couple of weeks ago, I recommend everybody does, we went over some of these things. Um, and he's going to work on them, we're going to have to address some of these things with the budget, but as you say, with the inter-fund. You know, the council set up payments and they just were never done.
Right.
And so now we are like, we should have had most of those paid off, because there was a ten-year repayment pan, plan from two thousand and eleven, and now we're in twenty twenty five. And I bet we've only paid ten percent. So, you know, going forward, we got to address that.
Sure.
Um.
When we start building our budget, it's something that we, I plan to in our workshops, um, when we get that all scheduled, it's something we're going to have to plan for. I just need to have harder numbers between now and then for exactly how much we have left to owe. But if it, if the council wants to do the responsible thing and actually pay those things back, we have to set it up in the budget, plan for it, and then to carry it out.
I think we.
The carry out part is on us.
We have set it up in the budget before.
It doesn't look like prior people in the leadership roles here made sure that happened.
Yeah.
But it is a focus of the people that are currently here.
Yeah.
Any other council questions or comments?
Um, ideas on, uh, what type of ideas, Michael, do you think we have as far as how to increase revenue?
So one of the biggest ways that other places get their revenue, and sometimes you can do it quicker than not, it's, uh, essentially through retail taxes. If you can find a way to bring in retail, and I know that there's been some retail loss lately, luckily, or unluckily, depending on how much you like them. Uh, those aren't our big fish, but what you need is good business in here. So if you have the property, if you have a place to put them, and you can ramp it up quick enough, you can pull out of the spiral. Planning now, forward, making that happen. You also might want to address what the retail tax is, it doesn't have to be a dramatic change to have a dramatic impact. Other than that, you really got to start looking to things that worked historically, you'd have to get developers in here building the houses, but that doesn't have the immediate financial impact. As what the tax revenue will get you.
I might, I have a question as far as when you're saying about retail and builders that coming in. Um, it seems, would it be beneficial that, uh, the commercial is involved and in, in sync with the development and with the property?
Sure.
Also, you know, like with the parks, it's not going to bring us necessary revenue as far as, but it bring people in, so it could bring revenue, but. I think that's something that we need to look at, that, uh, sometimes we throw a bunch of houses out, which has been great, we've got, you know, there's some nice subdivisions. But we're really lacking in that base, that, that retail base.
If you bring in, you know, a hundred new full houses of families, and you don't have any new places for them to shop, you're going to see a very little return on the investment. Past the initial permitting phase of the houses. So yes, you'll see an uptick when they start moving in, and the houses are being built and whatnot, great, but that doesn't go forever. They have to have a place to spend their money, and the better you make I own a place for them to spend money, that, that, that lets the money stay here. Um, all that is money that's, that's good, and it betters the city, but the immediate effect usually comes from like your retail taxes. And sometimes you can still make a, you know, with a very low change, bring in enough money to. You know, we cross those lines of revenue and expenses just a little bit back the other direction, we're going the right direction at that point, right now. Right now, it's wrong.
Are you suggesting to raise our retail tax? We've got businesses closing.
It is not in my, it is not in my, everything I've been looking at right now, something that I have explored as far as what the business are going through. I'm just telling you where your budget's at, and the quickest avenues other places have come out of it, it's still up to you to decide how that happens, but that is. Typically, how other people are able to bounce back. There are outside the box ways of thinking. I'm welcome to hear them, but until then, the success rates I've seen other places is usually a quarter to half a percent change brings you out. And then you also have to make the environment better to, uh, bring in more businesses. The competition helps, and it's just more places for people to spend their money locally.
Councilmember Mitchell, anything good? Alright, um, open up for a public comment? Thank you, Michael.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Good information. Um, it might be a good time, Gary Thomas, by the way, it might be a good time to talk about the purchasing of a clubhouse. For your golf course out there. And when you're doing this, I would apply a lot of caution, because. The, the public still wants to know what you're not going to be doing. Your, your money is very limited and so forth, so grants are probably drying up, so. Anyway, kind of wonder what services will be cut, police fire, uh, public works or whatever, so. The city was going to put in, uh, I own industrial park out there at the end of the bypass, which would be out there. By the tracks across from Howard Park. And I think you guys owe it to the public to really, and yourselves, to really see about what's it going to take to get that going. I think there's been some interest in the, in the years gone by, but that could be a pretty good source of revenue, just having an industrial park out there and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Larry Rhodes, I'd like to say something about the audits. The last two Larry Bing wouldn't certify them, because he can get all the information from the city at that time, and that's a fact, so they ain't accurate. Um, the other thing is, they got a, on, on a ringer ranch, how come we don't see a drawing of a hotel there or something? Should have been built on Castle Oaks, and you let the developer do away with all the land to build anything, you got twelve acres when there was probably. At least probably seventy-five acres to begin with, they're industrial. He took, that city, let them get away with it. Didn't do a damn thing, hate to say it, that's my back words, yeah. They didn't do nothing, and now you're, they left you in this boat. And I don't know how that's going to happen, but for the developer puts one house in there, there ought to be a hotel crossing a prison. Because they don't, nobody wants to live across from a prison anyway. Be a perfect place for it, maybe a gas station, maybe a new grocery store. I mean, it's a perfect place for it. And I think for to build one house, that ought to be done, because we're going to, Starburst people are already here to death. And I know you mentioned eleven million dollars, they've never mentioned your retirement fund. I bet you it's thirteen or fourteen million dollars in the hole. If we went broke right now, they probably have to sell our houses to pay off the retirement fund. They never mentioned the retirement fund, thank you.
Hello, I'm Mitzi Wanley, the only thing that I wanted to comment on is retail downtown. Because I hear a lot of scuttlebutt, and we're not Sutter Creek, we're never going to be Sutter Creek. We're not on a major highway with tourists. And the retail downtown to spend thousands of dollars to see what's going to work would be silly. For forty years, it's been a problem. The problem is people don't shop downtown, and those nice cute little stores that closed, I'm sure it wasn't because of the tax. It was because nobody coming to their shops to shop that keeps it alive. So unless there is some way you can figure out that's going to keep downtown alive. Uh, no retail, I, I've seen so many retail shops come and go, it's ridiculous. It's just they don't get the support, and we don't get the tourism. We do not get the tourism to support downtown. I don't know about the rest of it, but thank you.
Thank you, Mitzi. Any other public comment? Who calls public comment? That's a good point, when I was like, well, before I was a kid, I think that when the city made the most money is when we had a oil company downtown and a car dealership. So let's bring back oil company. Um. Any other council discussion? There's no motion on this, correct?
Good presentation, Michael, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Okay, uh, on to the original first, I don't, item. Adoption Resolution number two zero two five dash four approving the fiscal year twenty thousand two twenty-three, twenty thousand twenty-four. Amherst County Regional Traffic Mitigation Fee Program Annual Report. Mr. Lee?
Sorry? Just sorry.
Run to the first item. Are, are you doing that one?
Uh, that's basically the, uh, the resolution of, in terms of the approving the, the, the items that we, uh, submitted every year.
Is there no staff report for these items?
It's in, in here.
It's in here, I understand that, but there's no staff report on any of this.
It's item J one.
Can we take action with no staff report to the attorney?
Yes, we can.
I, I, I'm deferring to the city attorney on all of these. That's what you're here for.
Anyone have any comments or questions on it?
I'll make a quick comment, this is just stuff that, um, through building, we collect regional traffic fees, and this report is showing that. Under this report, I own generated one oh eight, five eighty-four, which was second only to the county. And you will notice that there are no projects in I own.
Right.
So we need to, going forward, need to get a project going, because we're sending money to ACTC. And we're not getting any projects, because we're not sending them any projects. So let's work on that this year.
Well, just to address that question now, Miss, uh, Miss, uh, Bonham has, uh, attended the last ACTC meeting, so again, she was.
Supposed to be a council member.
Um, so.
There's, there's no council member assigned to ACTC?
Okay, no, not for the next three years, I'll think.
Clarification, that's for the board, so a council member can go to any meeting, uh, we're not on the rotation for the ACTC board. Um, I attended the one, George wasn't able to make it, so he sent me up to the ACTC meeting, and basically, I think we learned this last year, but it was basically the same, they're not, the board has given direction, they're not doing big funding of giant. But it was basically the same. They're not, the board has given direction. They're not doing big funding of giant projects. So they're looking for shovel ready, small projects to get pavement on the ground. So I know Susan Peters was there who has come up with a couple of ideas of possible roads that can be funded in I own. Cause they have to show a. Regional impact and not a state road, which is most of our roads. And they're looking at things that are tied to regional facilities. Evacuation routes and possibly schools they can count in that. So that was kind of the criteria they're looking at. So they have another call for funding in August is the deadline. So you guys can come up with projects for August to submit that. And then you can also petition, that's what I was looking for, petition to have you, last year, I believe you put in four possible roads. And three were denied because they were Bacon Street, two of them, which is not a regional artery. So those were not approved. And then one was proved for tier two, which tier two is for the future. So we have currently. No projects that are approved for tier one and current funding. Historically, we have spent $380,000 with ACT funds. And those were for the bypass to the design and engineering and trying to figure out a route for the bypass. Which those types of projects are no longer being funded. So ACTC is like, we need.
Those were grant funds, aren't they?
No, that's the ACTC funds that they paid.
No, 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 no. The money we spent on the virus was a grant, my understanding. From sometime back.
Okay, that, those could be separate. I'm just talking about ACTC funds that were spent. We've done, we've put in, I think, close to, it tells you in the report, is it almost 2 million in fees that we've sent up there from the developers? And we've, out of that, we've spent 380. It, it's not dollar for dollar. You, you put a dollar and you get a dollar out. It's based on the projects. So we have spent some money, but it was all towards the bypass. So now they're looking for short, round, you know, ready to go projects.
So like now we could petition for Mill, Mill Street because it's by the school, which is a regional traffic area.
Yes, yes.
Any other council discussion? Open up a comment?
I would like to comment that the city didn't pay them $500,000 a long time ago. They don't want to mention that. And also Sutter Creek didn't pay 1.2 million on Gold Rush, didn't collect it. And we just give a developer a million dollars for two, for a covert, not a bridge, it's a covert. We just give them a million dollars and we ain't seen it. So a lot of this is caused by developers and. And if you want to put some money in something, it ought to be in West Marlette. We need to fix the sewer line and the street. It's terrible. There's, and that's been going on forever. Worried about a bypass. And I don't, the state ain't gonna ever, you ain't got, ever have one over 113 million dollars last time I heard. And I've heard as high as 154 million now. That ain't going to happen. And, and they bring them in and anything, the blueback road up the code is going to cost a fortune. Anyway, that's what I got to say, but Marlette, West Marlette ought to be taken care of in the sewer line underneath it and the drainage. It's a big problem with drainage. 97, I don't know what the intersection is. I think it would be the second stop sign down there with three feet of water in the road. Thank you.
Any other puppet comment? Close public comment? Someone want to make a motion?
I made the motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash four approving the fiscal year 2324 ACRTMF program report.
Let me hear a second. Second. The first and the second, hold favorite, say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on to item two, adoption of Resolution Number 2025 dash six approving and authorizing the city manager to sign purchase contract for the. Vacant lots at 105 South Benavista Street and 125 East Market Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Previously, there is a gentleman, a longtime resident who recently passed away that owned many city lots and buildings. The broker contacted me recently and offered to sell. Both properties on 105 South Bonus Street and 125 Market Street. They were going to ask between 50 and 60,000 for each lot. We negotiated and we came to a, a price conclusion of 82.5 for both lots. They're within the city limits. They would be excellent opportunities for the city to have, you know, lots within downtown. I think one of the big issues that always comes up in, in I own is, is the fact that there's no parking. So this would provide a lot of different options for the city. I know Mr. Mackey was highly in support of this to purchase the lots, but he would allow the city to. A lot of flexibility to create parking, to create many other things, you know, in that manner. So there's my, my recommendation to, to pursue these lots and to allow them to proceed to the purchase contract.
Thank you, George. I'm usually not one for city buying property, but it's a good deal and I think it could be of use, so. Does everything else?
Yeah, me too. I think in the past, the city's done more harm by selling property than buying property.
I have a question to the city attorney. Once we, first of all, what's it zoned? And second of all, the minute it becomes city property, does it become surplus property for low income housing?
If you sell it. I don't know the zoning. I believe it's commercial, but I'm not sure. Surplus requirements.
Be identified by the state.
Surplus, the surplus process would only apply if the city intends to dispose or sell of the land. If it keeps it for its own use, it wouldn't be subject to those requirements. It just keeps it and operates it. You're not disposing of it.
So, I mean, we're, we're talking about creating revenue.
There's no determination in terms of whether we're going to create revenue or not.
Right.
One of the options is to make it a parking lot.
Parking.
Parking for.
I, yeah, I, I heard that part. What's to stop somebody else from buying it in? If it's commercial, building something on it that would generate revenue?
It would be up to the city because the city would own it.
No, if we didn't buy it is what I'm saying. And so we don't spend the, the $82,000. Somebody else buys it and puts a retail shop of some sort there. Just asking.
If it ever went out to the open market at that price, it would sell quickly, in my personal opinion.
Is it big enough for a small hotel?
2005 is, to me, is an extremely good price for the city because you're getting city vacant lots basically for 41,000 feet. So.
And then what would it cost for us to improve it?
I've got that far. You can leave it blank, you could in, but again, there's a starting point. In my personal opinion, these are valuable lots and if the city didn't buy it, someone else will.
Yeah, okay, somebody else buy it.
What you sense is there's going to be way more money spent turning these into parking lots. But I'm okay with that. It is a good deal, but just realize that this is just the start. And we tried to get a parking lot 10 years ago and we still haven't got one. All I would ask is that. It gets funded out of traffic money because it's a parking lot. I don't think ARPA is appropriate. I mean, you can use ARPA, but I think it'd be way better to use traffic money because it's for a parking lot. And there's money in the fund, so I'd be in favor of this if you used traffic funds instead of ARPA. I'm not in favor of spending ARPA money on it.
Councilmember Mitchell?
I like the negotiation, the price and the opportunities that it presents for the future. Certainly we have seen what we're faced with. We know we need to come up with solutions and this will give you an opportunity. To find those.
All right, we'll open up the public comment.
Gary Thomas, seemed like I was just up here after your financial report. And I would again ask that you apply caution to. Or you're spending your money and so forth. I don't. I see this as probably a money drain. You're not going to put something there yourself. You're just going to end up paying money. To go out and do this. It's probably well needed. There's no doubt about it, but. You have employees and you have obligations and everything like that, that I think you should. Really look at what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
I know you guys are talking about downtown. I happen both misses. The reason they don't have a lot of business, they have no parking. And if you buy these two things, they ought to make them for, you have a lot of things going out there at your arena. That people want to come home, come here and eat, then they can't park their trailers. That parking lot down there can hardly get my duly truck in there. I take up two spots if I park in there. Can't make the corner and those lot would be just gravel and nothing fancy. Just put some gravel on it, make parking lots out of some people can park on it. You start zoning it off, those people can't park there and they would get in the ticket from our. Somebody be screaming about it. And I think that we lose a lot of business there. There might be 200 trailers out there and they can't come here to eat. It used to be Stacy's parking lot down there used to be packed sometimes. Thank you.
Look at it this way, commercial property. Is always a good buy if you can get it as cheap as he's going to get. That's pretty cheap. Cause I know they paid a lot more than that for that property. So all I can say is if you don't, if you buy it. And then you can't do nothing, well, you can sell and probably make a 50,000 on it. So I don't know what the, the problem is. I, I wouldn't be afraid to buy it. You know? I would, it's, it's a good buy because there's nobody going to come. Right now and buy that lot and put a commercial there. Because just, just to start. If there's no water there, that's probably 20,000. And then PG&E. Probably another 20,000. You're 40,000 right there for PG&E and water probably most likely. And then. Everybody will be complaining and tell them what to do and how to do it. And then they won't build it. So for that price, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pass it up. Because I know the reason why they're selling that property and I'm not going to repeat it, but I heard it from a good source, so. They're selling it to say, if you have something and you need money, you're going to sell it cheap. And this is a good chance to get it cheap. Because the guy that owned it left, well, I'm not going to say, but I just say it's a good deal. Cause you're never going to get property for that price again and I, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I have two daughters that own a business downtown that is doing good. The problem with the business is parking. There's, they could have a lot more foot traffic if there was more parking. And when I go to Sutter Creek, we are not Sutter Creek, but Sutter Creek doesn't have parking, but they have parking. Several parking lots that are off the main street that I, that anybody that goes there knows you can park there and not have to fight for the main street parking. And support those businesses. And I think a lot of our businesses fail because of the traffic issue. So I think these two parking spots would greatly benefit. They might not make money themselves, but they'll make money for our community and downtown businesses.
Thank you. Any other public comment? A closed public comment? Can I get a motion from council?
Well, are we going to discuss it? Usually after public comment, we have a discussion.
Well, usually right now I'm not going to. If someone wants to make a motion, if you want to. Comment more, comment.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve it using traffic mitigation funds.
That motion can be subject to confirmation of eligible use of funds if it's allowed. If it's not, can the motion include use of funds otherwise legally allowed?
So we have a motion. We have a second?
I'm, I'm.
We don't have a second, so let's redo the motion.
I'm not familiar with the type of fund that Dominic was talking about.
Maybe the. Finance manager can tell us. My point being it's going to be a parking lot and rightfully should come out of parking lot funds. Instead of ARPA, which is very, if you want to do something, ARPA has very little restrictions on it. Traffic funds have a lot of restriction on it. You can have a whole bunch of money sitting in parking lot fund that you could never spend because. We have never had another opportunity by parking lot. So that's why I would rather use those funds.
Mr. Allen is correct. For the most part, if, if it falls into the category of. It being legally allowed to be used for that, we should be trying to do that instead of trying to take from. A more universal fund, like you were saying. There's a few avenues that pour in. Gas fund, traffic mitigation, RMRA. It's just a matter of going through the rules and making sure. We're not in violation of any of those, so.
Do you have money?
There's money in the funds, yes. They're all fairly healthy because they're based on capital projects we're not doing. So the money's there. It's checking the box of whether or not we can use it. If you're going for parking, there's a decent to high chance that they will square. But as Josh was saying, our attorney. You might want to have the addendum in there if, of proving this with the prioritization of using. Those funds from those sources first, and if not, using it from more universally available funds. Hope that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
I, I. Looking at me, I want to.
I'm not on board.
Go ahead.
So you want to redo your motion?
I think the motion, motion, the motion is on the table.
Counsel comment.
I'm sorry.
You're not commenting.
We are allowed to comment.
I'm discussing with Dominic and legal counsel.
You're asking for a vote.
Make the motion, yeah. And it's been. Restated with traffic or gas funds, appropriate, or other appropriate funds per the attorney's advice.
Correct. So there's a motion on the floor. Someone want to make a second?
I'll second that.
Yeah.
First and second, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No, that is.
Ayes have it.
$1 million we've encumbered. This meeting and the last meeting. In these votes.
Next item, three, Resolution 2025. Approving the First Amendment. Excuse me, approving the authority, execution of a First Amendment and reinstating employment contract for the city manager.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Yeah. Recently, the city manager presented some terms for amendment to his existing contract. This contract amendment would extend his current contract from 2027 to 2029. It would increase his annual salary from 135,000 to 180,000. His severance would also extend as currently it's three months. This contract amendment would extend it to 18 months. Also, his benefit plan would change and the city would be responsible for 100% the costs of his healthcare premiums. So this contract is presented to the council for approval. It's been drafted and in your agenda packet. And can take any questions.
Um, the 3% to his 457 is 68,000 per year?
Say that, sorry?
The 3% contribution to his 457. Yeah.
I'm not sure. There's been no changes to that.
Okay.
To whatever it was previously.
Salary, then it's another $68,000 on top. That the city puts into his 457. Which brings the total up to 277,000 base.
Any other council comments?
Yeah, well, I have some comments, sure. I. I am for this for many reasons. And I'll try to be brief because it's going to be a long night, but when George is. And, uh, I'll try to be brief. This is gonna be a long night, but, uh, when George was first hired, he was hired, uh, mostly for his business experience. And he came at a bargain rate at the time. Um, city managers around were making much more money. And, uh, he acknowledged the fact that he didn't have city manager experience, but, but, but he knew that, uh, he believed that he could, would be good at this and the city needed somebody that has the business experience. We've gone through six city managers in five years. George has been a resident of this county for over thirty, thirty-five years. He owns, knows people, he's networks with people. Um, he's brought consistency to the city, which we need. Wastewater is close to, finally close to the end of a cease and desist order. Um, he's an excellent negotiator. Along with others on the council, um, improvements have been made out of the school with the parking that had sat idle for years. It's helped improve the traffic, which is still abysmal at this point. But, uh, it has improved and the parking is, uh, much, much better, it's much safer. He's worked with the local developer over at Wildflower. To put in safety, uh, and the council, the council, of course. But, uh, he brings ideas to the council, um, to put the traffic, the, the safety items and safety, uh, crosswalks and stuff along Foothill Drive. Um, he has excellent working relationship with the staff. Uh, that's also been a problem with the city of Iowa. We've gone through staff so consistently, why are we so far behind on audits? Every time we get close to have finished an audit, we have a, a, a new city manager. So I am for this and I'm curious to see what the public has to say. Because I think, uh, we're on the cusp of some good things in the city with, uh, all of you and those of us who care so deeply about it.
Council Mayor Mitchell, have anything to add?
No, I'm anxious to hear what the public has to say as well. I appreciate Mr. Lee's work and, uh, when he was, he was unanimously chosen by the city council and by the public when he was hired. Uh, I think that reflects well.
Point of order. It goes to public comment first before we talk about our vote.
I didn't talk about him, I just.
I'm running the meeting, not you.
Well, I can call point of order.
Can you, Jack? Do you have anything else?
No, that's, that's it. I'm fine.
Alright, anything else? Open up the public comment.
Andy Algalara, two seven nine Sprint Creek Drive. We've had six city managers before him and all they did, they didn't make us money. We had to pay their big high salaries and they just spent our money. Look at what Rock did. He took what? Three hundred and some thousand dollars and bought that building that wasn't worth a hundred thousand. We tried to tell him, don't buy it because people have looked at it and they said it wasn't any good. And nobody said nothing. Everybody thought he was doing a good job. I never could figure that out. All he did was spend money. And then this, our city manager Lee comes here. I mean, my God, comes here and, and I'm not for giving people raises, but he come here. And the first thing he did, he went down the bank and he said, hey, I'm probably, probably said, I'm just gonna make it, it might be not right, but he probably said, hey, you guys been making half a million dollars a year off of this money. What are you doing with it? He says, we want it. So he got it. And he's already paid for his salary. He's paying for his salary by what he went down to the bank to get our interest. So I don't think there's any problem with giving him a raise. I think, how long is your contract for?
Early through twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, no problem. But I'm just saying, you know, he's paying, actually he's paying for his own salary. Because if he hadn't have got, we hadn't hired him, the other people that would have come, they would have never figured it out. Cause way over their head. He's pretty smart on finances and that's what we need. And if you guys don't approve his contract, what are we gonna get next? We'll get a very bad city manager again. So I just hope you guys approve it. Get it over with. Like I said, he's paying for his own salary. If you really stop and think about it, common sense for a change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, take everything I say with a grain of salt. The guy is my boss, so.
This is public.
But I am still relatively an outsider. I'm getting to know I own. I'm still very new here. I've done work with the state, the county, uh, and some stuff on the federal level. It is very common for people in government leadership positions to fall into the, we can't do that because of this. And they'll find a reason. And there usually is a lot of good reasons why you can't do something. And not enough determination and drive and planning to figure out how you can do something. George is still, uh, unjaded enough to be ambitious on things that he wants to go and do for this city. He's also asked everyone the right questions to find out how it can be done and how it can be done legally. So between the determination, the wanting to improve the area and then doing it, asking people the right steps along the way, he's not looking for reasons to stand in those way of why can't we do it? It's why haven't we done it? And trying to fix it on his own. And as what was stated before, on the finance side, I can honestly say for at least the next couple of years, just this year so far, he's paid for himself with interest gains that were unrealized before. So that's something you're gonna wanna hold on to. Then lastly, with the audits that are going on, your guys' turnover has been abysmal. For maybe justified or unjustified reasons, I wasn't here. But regardless, with every turnover, you guys are taking steps back. Things are being left unfinished. Now this person comes in, does their own agenda, has a learning curve. Hit the ground running and has been working on it since. So I hope you take that all into consideration.
Thank you, Michael.
It's getting serious. Stacy Mitchell, three eight four Eagle Drive. Um, George, I'm really proud of you. You're doing a wonderful job. Um, I appreciate what's been going on. You know, I worked in accounting office quite a bit of my life. Um, and I like, I've always been the one that you get in there, you get it done, you move on, you find good ways to do things. You know, you're, you give your life to what you're doing and, you know, and I see him doing that and I really appreciate that. And I think he's moving this town forward instead of moving it backwards like what I used to see with Rock. I didn't even understand what Rock was doing half the time. But anyway, um, I'm all for this. Like you said, with the amount of interest that he's making us, I think it's great that he's getting that. So, and the reason that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Larry Rhodes. I'd like to say, I worked on a train depot and we got chased off by the police and by the former managers, manager. And this man went to my brother-in-law and, and is going back together with volunteers. And, and that would have never happened with the other type people we got here. And like, and he said, he's paid for his salary. I don't know how much he's made. I bet you he's made probably four hundred thousand dollars in eight months or whatever, since he's been in there. And that, that paid for the man's salary. That ought to pay for something. I mean, these people that don't like him, I mean, this is crazy. I mean, the man's working for the city and trying to, and his staff, I guess is getting along great with him. What the heck's going on? It was a big fight all the time in this place. And then, and it's getting to be better, really better. And it hadn't been that way in ten years. And I really appreciate it. And there's only one person that's been in more meetings than I have and she's sitting right there. I've been to more meetings than anybody that's sitting in this hall. Thank you.
Any other, oh, there we go.
I'll be quick and brief. I'm Mitzi Windley. Um, the thing that I appreciate about George is he's a businessman. He's not a politician. He has common sense. He's going to try to, like they said prior, he's gonna try to get things done. But again, we don't need any more politicians. We've had six of them recently and they were all horrible. So that's what I have to say about George. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitzi.
Hey, my name is Justin and I'm a contracted worker for your ION wastewater treatment plant. I come from a municipality, um, and, uh, in municipalities, you gotta deal with, you know, of course, council, but you also have, it's, it's just, it's different. Uh, and, and having George come in as a businessman and his approach, like you were saying, Vice Mayor, I agree a hundred percent. If he were to leave, the wastewater treatment plant, all the progress we're making would go way backwards. It has been a nightmare. And George has been on top of things. He has asked me on certain subjects, hey, can you call in a favor? So I called them and asked a favor and we got it done, you know, and it's just, he's very efficient and he's on top of things. And I'm really appreciative of his like support and help on what I'm doing over there. So, thank you.
Good evening, council. Uh, whether I'm speaking as staff or, um, a resident, it doesn't really matter. Uh, Ken's not able to be here tonight. He's on his way back from the fires in LA. I believe he's on Zoom because he wanted to be here. We're gonna talk about the fire engine shortly. But we, um, have been through many, many city managers. And Ken and I talk about the city all the time, how we can improve it. And I can definitely say that we're both a hundred percent behind George. He is very, um, he's very positive about the city. He has great ideas. And when he presents something to us, uh, we do everything we can to help him make that come to fruition. Uh, we haven't had a city manager like this in the past and we really encourage you to continue to support George.
Thank you, Deb. Any other public comment?
I basically agree with what most of the people have been saying here. However, forty-five thousand dollars more per year and it mounts to more than that. That's just the base money that we're talking about. Um, what happened to the idea of following a contract? Um, we've got a contract. We got a contract. Everybody agreed to it. George agreed to it. I like him. I don't think we should give him another forty-five thousand dollars a year though. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Close public comment? Someone wanna make a motion?
You have more you wanna discuss?
I, I.
Microphone, counselor?
Our, the money that's been going out at every meeting. Um, we just heard that our expenses, our revenues are down, um, but we continue to spend money. Um, it's, it's not a small increase. It's a very large increase. Um, and it's, and it's, it has nothing to do with George. It's looking at the numbers. And the amount of money that we have spent just in the last two council meetings. And the taxpayers come before everybody. And I understand everybody here has a personal relationship with George, but there are other members of the community. So you have to think of everybody. That's all I'm saying.
Um, without, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, adopt resolution number two oh, two five dash, no, wrong one, I'm sorry, uh, two zero two five dash zero five. Approving and authorizing execution of, of first amended and restated employment contract for the city manager.
Second.
Have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
No.
Ayes have it? Would someone like to go grab, uh, councilman Allen?
Just to make a legally required announcement of a new contract for the city manager. A hundred eighty thousand dollar salary through twenty twenty-nine, severance of eighteen months, uh, standard benefit plan, uh, retirement contributions and full cost of his healthcare plan premiums.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did someone go get him? Oh, okay. Okay. Moving on to our members in the corner that have been waiting patiently, approval of purchase of fire engine for the fire department. I believe, uh, Ms. Mackey has the presentation.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Um, on your staff report, um, you can reference it. Uh, we are looking to purchase a, a new used, um, fire engine for the amount of three hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Uh, tonight with me is Chief Parker and also Engineer Bennett to answer any questions you might have about the apparatus. They have researched it. They've been down, they've looked at it. They went through the entire thing. This is an opportunity that we have uh, to purchase a fire engine, uh, for about half the price of what it would cost if we were to purchase one new. Uh, this money, this funding would be coming from our special apparatus account, uh, that we pay into by going on strike teams and doing, um, um, coverage for a CAL FIRE during large incidents. We, uh, get paid for the engines and, and our personnel. So we separate that amount out for the engines and we put into a special fund. And that fund, there should be over, um, a half a million dollars in that fund. It is, it appears right now that it might be in some other separate fund just because of coding. So we're working on that. Chief Mackey may be on, uh, Zoom. I'm not quite sure. He did lose signal, so I'm not sure if you can find him on there. Um, he probably has a lot to say. But, um, anyhow, we're here to answer your questions. He is coming over the grapevine right now, so he's on his way back from LA.
Okay. Any other, um, any questions from council or discussion?
Uh, gosh, I just hate bringing this up. Um, one of the interfund loans. Um, and I know you say you have the money and I don't know how that money can be used, but.
It was set up quite a while ago. Uh, it's twenty years ago specifically for, and I know you're talking about the money that's owed back that is under um, dispute because there even before, um, that was borrowed, PD had borrowed. And I can't, I'm not gonna get into it. That's between the chief and I know he's spoken with, uh, Michael about it. Not sure if that was ever vetted out, but even before the, um, the, the station was built, there was interfund borrowing prior to.
Yeah, it was, I think the balance is four hundred.
Well, okay, so this was from, this was PD from ION, from fire department. And then when, okay, this has nothing really to do with, with this account. This is a separate account.
That's, yes, I understand that.
Any other council questions?
Yep. Um, I just like to make sure that I, that there is money. I did speak to the chief today. Um, never seen that account. Um, been working with the finance manager on it. So if there, and I told the chief, if there's money in the account for this purpose, then great, we'll buy the truck. And I believe that there is, um, it's kinda hard to find, which is, why is it hard to find? But that's a whole number su- subject. Um, but I believe there's money in the funds and, and, um, you know, and it's appropriate use of that. The other items are for another, another subject as well, because there is some other outstanding loans going on between a lot of departments. But this is just for the fire apparatus from the fire apparatus fund.
To show a little clarity on a few things that have been said so far, uh, so far, we've been able to confirm the majority of what is believed to be in those. It's just they are separated into separate accounts. Historically, I can't justify who did it and why. It's something we'll have to clean up going forward, but the money is there. We were able to track the majority of it this evening and we'll get more clarity from predecessors reaching out to them on that. As far as the repayment plan, definitely an interesting. Well, it was brought up, so I.
But it's not on the agenda item.
Oh, okay. Well, I just thought since.
No, yeah, we're fine.
You can continue, Michael.
Brief, a brief response is okay.
So since it was brought up, the only reason I bring it up is there is a payback plan that's in order. Whether or not people followed it correctly was its own thing, but the way it was supposed to be paid back was, uh, how impact fees, CFDs were split up on revenue going forward. So if you apply those as it's supposed to be written, this money that they're talking. So if you apply those as it's supposed to be written, this money that they're talking about shouldn't go to paying that off as there's already a payment plan in process for how that's supposed to be paid off. I hope any of that helps you guys out.
Thank you.
Any questions? One thing I've learned in the last month or two that, that the fire department with Chief Mackey and Debbie have, have been, are very good with balancing their budgets and, and very fiscally responsible. So I have no issues with this if the money is there and it sounds like it is. And I'd much rather be prepared than underprepared in case we have some issues. Or that truck is 33 years old that it's gonna replace.
Also, Member Mitchell?
I have nothing.
All right, open up the public comment.
Your time's up. Sit down.
Sit down.
I'm a, I'm a senior citizen, Andy Ogallara, 279 Spring Creek Drive. I've known Kenny since he was a little kid. He was climbing up on fire truck. If Kenny says the money's there, it's there because he never lies. He knows it's there. He saves. He might be hiding it somewhere in a can, but he's got the money, you know? Kenny's got the money. And I fired, I, I watched the fire down in LA and their big reason down there is they, all their fire trucks were old, broke down, and they spent the money for something else, you know? For gay flags and all that stuff. Have you seen all that stuff? I'm serious. They did. If you've seen it, they showed it on TV. They're all over the captain's deal. So I, I believe that Kenny has the money and he wouldn't be buying this if he didn't have the money and if he didn't need it, he wouldn't be buying it. And, and you know, we've got one of the best fire departments because our house insurance is cheap as you can get it. And if you guys don't let Kenny buy the deal, we're gonna be like LA. If we have a fire, they're gonna go start that old truck up and it's gonna go boom and they're gonna say, well, it don't run. So we gotta have a good fire department. So I say, buy it.
Dave Parker's, 837 Sutter Lane. I've been on this fire department for 40 years. I've been doing fire service for 52 years. Our engines that we send out these grass rigs are 33 years old. The parts are getting hard to find. The benefit of this engine that's down there now, it's $1,000 to $300,000 cheaper than a new one. And we won't have to wait three years to get the new one. It's, we can go pick it up tomorrow if you cut the check. So, and it's not 33 years old and parts are not hard to find. And it's got everything we would have ordered on a new one if we would have ordered one. That's just what I have to say.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Larry.
Thanks, Dave.
I, I was only on the fire department 18 years, but I did most of the maintenance work on everything back then. One thing I gotta say is $300,000. If they keep having fires like it goes in Southern California, it goes on it. They could pay for it in a couple of years. Won't cost the city one dime. I'd just like you to know that. They get paid by the truck and they get paid pretty good. Especially a lot of times it just sits in the yard, does nothing. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
They call for a vote there.
All right, someone might entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the fire engine for the fire department.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it?
Here's your truck.
Thank you, Council. Thank you very much.
Tell the chief to go slow on that grapevine.
You can slow down now.
Okay, moving on to item five, discussion, start time for city council regular meetings and closed session meetings.
Yes, I prepared this item for the council. It's been a topic of discussion the past couple of meetings of what time does city council's regular meetings start? What might be the most convenient time to hold closed session? And what are the allowed methods to hold that closed session? Under your code, regular meetings are supposed to start at 6:00 PM. When and how closed sessions occur are, are some different options to do that. One option is to make an amendment to your code, which will be done by ordinance to specify that meetings or closed sessions specifically can start before 6:00 PM. The way we've been doing it the past couple of meetings is calling a special meeting for the hour before to hold the discussion of closed session items. And that can be called, a special meeting can be called by the mayor or a majority of the council. But I thought this was a good opportunity to get the council on the same page of when and how to do closed sessions because you could do it at 6:00 PM. You could do it at the end of the meeting. You could also do it before 6:00 PM and there are different ways to do that. But the past couple of meetings, it's occurred by special meeting, holding a closed session at 5:00 PM at the mayor's calling of a special meeting. And we wanted to have that item for discussion and you can provide direction, but it's, to me, it's mostly a discussion about what, what time would the council like to hold its closed session discussions?
Well, I'm the one that always brings it up. I think it's easier on staff because they're already here. These are on the attorney. You're not here too late. You can come in and we get it done. Almost every other city does it the same way. I see no problem with doing it at 5:00. I love doing it at 5:00. It prepares everyone that we can come in and we can say what happened in there if we made agreement on something. So I'm the one that always likes it that way. It's been that way for, ever since ION was here, except they changed it, I think, five, six years ago, something like that. And I wanna change it back to how it was. So that's my two cents.
Okay, so I'm the, one of the biggest complainers because I'm a guy that likes to do things by what the rules say. And it's nothing else other than that. The municipal code says 6 o'clock. That's when we're supposed to start the meetings.
And that's what I wanna change, by the way.
Okay. So if you wanna change the municipal code, then you have public hearing and you change the municipal code. And that's what we did in 2022, I believe. And we had a public hearing and nobody wanted to change the start times. Everybody ran for council knowing that the meeting started at 6:00. And if you're gonna change it, then wait till the next election cycle. So everybody knows what time the meeting's gonna start. I wouldn't necessarily like that because people that work out of town, like currently what I do, you precluded them from running for council. So like to, like it to be followed by the rules. The other thing is whenever there was a special meeting, this is how it typically goes down. So the mayor wants to call a special meeting because something's urgent or something like that. And the council gets polled. Hey, we wanna have a special meeting. Can you make it at 5:00? Blah, blah, blah. And we will get asked and the city clerk sends out an email saying what works for you. And none of that happened. So last time Stacy was mayor, or he's been mayor three times now. So to get around the municipal code, he just called a special meeting every single week and started the meetings at 5:00, which is not what a special meeting's supposed to be. Special meeting's supposed to be, something's urgent, something's pressing, then, you know, you have a special meeting. None of the things that we've been doing the last month have been that. So finally, if you pull up city website right now and you look at 2022, they're not even noticed correctly, which is the reason I recuse myself from the last item. So they're not noticed correctly. It says council meeting or special council meeting, 6 to 7. Then you gotta go in there and open it and find out what time it is. So it's not noticed correctly on the website. The meeting tonight was noticed correctly. The meeting from last time, it took three days to make that meeting legal. So the meeting was posted at 4:15 with, said just council meeting, but it started at 5:00. And then there was some pushback and then it was, oh, let's fix this. We'll call it a special meeting. So they called it a special meeting at 6:15. That went out. However, the website wasn't updated until about Monday afternoon where they actually changed the time. So, hey, if you want a short thing, if you wanna change the start times, you have a public hearing. You change the municipal code, okay? Other than that, you can't just call special meetings just because you wanna have a meeting at 5:00. And it's been this way for probably 10 years. In fact, the last time we had a meeting, the start time was 5:30, not 5:00. So that's my two cents. I just don't like the fact that, you know, someone can call a meeting whenever they want without a real reason, without consulting the rest of the council and violating the municipal code. The end.
Uh, comment, Mayor?
Sure.
I'd like to comment on the last meeting that we had, a special meeting for the closed session. It was noticed on Friday, which a special meeting does not have to be noticed on three days in advance. Noticed the mistake on Monday. It was corrected from 5:00 to 6:00 within the 24-hour notice for a special meeting. So nothing was done illegal. Everything was done legally.
Did you notice all council members?
Because you were correct.
Or poll all of us to see if we could make it?
I was not asked to.
But you did it last year and I didn't ask you to poll all the council members.
Usually it's asked by the city manager.
So, so now it's not custom to ask council members if they can make a special meeting? Is that protocol that we are no longer following?
It, it can be a protocol, but you're.
I'm, I'm.
You're, you're given notice and so far the past two, it's been a quorum to show up. But I know Councilmember Atlin and I had a discussion about it. I mean, we can present you with the options of what's allowed and order the options to hold which meeting and when.
I understand that. I'm just saying, in all the years past, when a special meeting was arising, when we felt we had an emergency situation, the city clerk reached out to every council member. Hey, can you make the time? And if somebody couldn't make the time, we adjusted the time so everybody could attend. That's not happening now. So that last special meeting, I got notice at 4:45 on a Friday. I have to make arrangements with my employer. And I had to do it again for this one. In 2022, I had a conversation with Mayor Rhodes who said he was going to do it to intentionally cause a hardship for certain council members that worked out of town. And that appears to be the intent. None of them, these items were an emergency.
It doesn't say emergency meeting. It says special meeting.
None of them were urgent. They were, they were all on the regular agenda at first. Every single one of those items was on the regular agenda. And then when I said, hey, our meeting is supposed to start at 6:00, then the special meeting was created to start at 5:00.
I did, I.
I understand. You, don't, don't waste your time. I know I'm talking to the wall.
Well, no, it's only, it's to inform everyone of what are the rules for regular meetings and special meetings and.
Yeah, the problem is the last city attorney had a completely different view. And every time I wanted to call a special meeting, and a lot of time it was on Castle Oaks, I had to fight tooth and nail. He said, I wanna know what's urgent. I'm gonna review it. And he blocked probably at least six special meetings we tried to call. So.
Okay.
There's a big disparity in your opinion and his.
Oh, that's fine. I've, I have included the statute in.
I, I, I.
So you can see.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, any?
Yes, I do. Briefly, I, I believe the discussion we're here to have is whether we're gonna change the start time or leave it the same. That's what we need to focus on. And as opposed to special, I mean, things that have happened in the past, let's stay, let's stay focused on now in my mind. But I, I like the 5:00 from the standpoint, I think, I'm retired. I can be here 5:00, 6:00, 7:00. I mean, that doesn't matter to me. I can come in the morning. But I like it and I do understand if there's employee, employee issues. There's no question. But I like it for the, for the fact that people don't have to come here 6:00. Listen to a, a closed session meeting that, you know, I can attest to hearing yelling and screaming at one time. We can come here at 5:00, get our closed session done. No one has, nobody has to be here. We can have a private closed session meeting. Audience doesn't have to get here till 6:00 and then have to wait here 45 minutes for us to come out. And it becomes a late night for us. And I just think it's, it's a, I just think it's a good time. It has nothing to do politically or anything like that. I just personally like it. Mostly because of our constituents.
Also, Member Mitchell?
I'm fine at 5:00, at 6:00. Wouldn't mind doing it at 8:00 in the morning so I could get back to happy hour. But.
Well, it's a, it's a hardship for me.
But hearing a hardship, that certainly is not what we wanna do. The piece for me, obviously, is it comes down to the timing that's right for those that are elected, but also more importantly, the timing that's right for the public so that they can get involved, that they can get to hear their opinions. The most important part of this meeting is not anything you guys say. It's what they say. And I want these folks to have every opportunity to discuss things that are on the agenda. And I think we make mistakes up here at times from the running meetings. But certainly their input's important. So whatever gets the most people here to hear the most opinions, I'm for that.
All right. With that said, open a public comment.
First, you made it again. This is the reason why I came tonight is because I used to hate coming to these meetings because you'd come and they'd talk for a few minutes and then closed session. And everybody'd go out and wait while you guys did closed session. And we had to wait around and waste our evening and not know when we were gonna be able to talk. And you've lost a lot of the community input by doing that. People that can come to the meeting to do your closed session stuff before we get here, instead of waiting for us to get here and then leaving us out here, it just doesn't make sense to me. And you want the public to come and talk and be here and be a part of all this? Then make us a part of all this. Do your closed session before we come. This is so much more inviting and you're going to get so much more community support and a lot more people at our meetings.
It sure is funny. A lot of you, I worked for the state and I was on a planning commission here. And I talked to personnel people in Sacramento and they were reluctant to let CAL Trans let me off to go to any meet, special meeting I had to go to before I even took the job as council on the planning commission. I'd just like you to know that. You can go above your boss. There's a system to do that. I only, only worked 35 years for the state. And the thing is, a whole bunch of you people were on these special committees like a sewer. It was 3:00, 2:00 in the afternoon and seems you could make that. You can't milk it to a council meeting at 5:00? What the heck's going on? Whole bunch of you did that all the time. Finance meetings, same way. I've been to a lot of them, 6:00. I just don't know what the problem is. And I think the people need to, need to, you need to address the habit so the people can hear. I've been in a lot of these closed sessions. You do them after the meeting. You come out here and I'd be, maybe I would stay and listen to it. Then you tell us nothing. But, I mean, that's a whole bunch of time. I mean, 10:00 at night, I'm sitting here and me and Janice are sitting here talking. I mean, this is crazy. And every other, even the supervisors have theirs before the meeting in the morning. So they can tell it. Sutter Creek does too. And I think Jackson does. I ain't certain on that. But I think Jackson does too. Why are we so special? Especially when the two, two of you work for the state. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Close public comment? Someone wanna make a motion to change the amendment of?
I would say that I, I don't need a motion. It would be.
Now you gotta set up a public hearing.
Counsel, if, it would be a direction from counsel of if you wanted staff to prepare an ordinance to change the start time of the meeting, or if it's general consensus that 5:00 PM is okay, you could continue doing it the way that you're doing it right now by calling a special meeting for 5:00 PM.
What if we considered 5:30?
We can't get nothing done in a half hour.
Well, we normally don't have four items for closed session.
Well, sometimes you could call it for 5:00 and sometimes you could call it for. Well, sometimes you could call it for five and sometimes you could call it for 5:30, depending on the agenda.
We'd have 5:30, but I.
I mean, I'd go with 5:30. So the last time we had a public hearing, it was on 5:30. Okay? And nobody even made a motion when they heard from the crowd. Of course, now you've got a different crowd and everybody's retired or whatever, and they can make whatever time they want. If we're going to do five or 5:30, we change the ordinance to 5:00 or 5:30. When I was the mayor, I put closed session at the end so nobody had to show up early and wait around for that hour like when they used to do at the front. And we did it at the back so you could leave if you wanted to. There was two people here today. And what did we report out? Direction given, the same stuff. So whether you're here or you're not here, you're not going to get. So nobody had an opportunity to ask a question on closed session today other than Elmer and Larry because they're the only two people here. So, again, I compromise at 5:30. But if if we're going to change it, it's going to be changed right. It's going to, we're going to have a public hearing. We're going to change the municipal code. Or there's going to be a reason that we need to start at five. Like, hey, we have a heavy closed session. Can you all make it at five?
We've never done it within a half hour, ever. I'll make a, like to change it to five o'clock.
Well, if you did it at 5:30 and you ran over, you could bump it to the end, the rest of it.
I'd say if you're going to continue the current way of calling special meetings, you call it at five or 5:30, depending on what's actually on the agenda.
I'd rather have the ordinance be correct instead of me calling a special meeting every time.
Well, the public's going to decide whether it's correct or not.
I would say I have I have two council members that might be in favor of bringing an ordinance back to council to specify that closed sessions might start before 6:00 PM.
I I.
I would need another one to move forward with that.
I'm not in favor of that. I'm in favor of leaving it alone.
Yeah, I am too.
However, if you are going to do it, then you're going to have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Well, if you're doing an ordinance, then that's a that's a process and legal costs and staff time. If the other way is to do it as you're doing and you don't change the code at all and you don't have an ordinance.
Just call a special meeting every time.
Yep. Those are the two options I've presented, that you continue doing what you're doing right now. Or we go forward with drafting an ordinance and presenting it to you. It would really just be some language to say closed sessions would begin before 6:00 PM, unless there's a majority in favor of Councilmember Atlin's approach of doing closed sessions at 6:00 PM or later.
Oh, I. The mayor can set the agenda of when closed session is. He could have it at the front, the middle, or the end. He could have it at the front for half an hour and then finish at the end.
Okay.
That's his prerogative. What I'm saying is, it's not the prerogative of the mayor to call a special meeting. I mean, it is the prerogative of the mayor to call a special meeting. But the spirit of the special meeting is when there's something urgent or something came up that we didn't know about, and we call a special meeting. And you show courtesy to the council by saying, hey, can you make the special meeting? We've got a heavy load tonight, and I'd like to get started early. I mean, any, that's a reasonable way to ask, and I don't think that would be turned down. But when you just, you know, no notice, no call from the city clerk, which she always used to do that. She used to call her email and say, hey, can you make this meeting? And that has stopped as well, so.
We could agree to follow certain procedures on like that of.
I want to make a comment. I'm pretty stuck on the five o'clock thing. And and I'm certainly not for a closed session 30 minutes before. We couldn't even get our closed session finished today in an hour. We had to table an item. And we almost actually, you know, we didn't want to rush anything. So we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we make a decision at a rest basis. So I'm for the five o'clock and and just trying to keep consistent on that. That's that's my opinion. And we did, we did have some public comment. I prefer a whole lot more than what we have. And we did have some positive public comment regarding that.
Councilmember Mitchell?
As long as you have a public hearing to decide it. I think that's what you need to do.
We had very few, we had very few special meetings last year. Only when Castle Oaks came up did we have special meetings. Other than that, nothing really fell in the category of a special meeting.
I I want to make a comment, though, though. I heard you say that you tried tooth and nail to call special meetings and they didn't work. So saying that you didn't have any was because of your lack of trying to have them. So I just want to call you out on that.
Thank you for calling me out, Vice Mayor. And I'm glad you're laughing.
I'm not laughing.
No, George is laughing.
George can laugh.
I would say I would say the threshold question is if you want closed sessions before 6:00 PM or at or after. And then we could figure out what the mechanism is. But I would first get consensus from the council of if it's happening before 6:00 PM or at 6:00.
We have consensus from three to put it at five o'clock, the motions to get it going.
What do I need to do, Josh?
You don't need to do anything, but if there's three council members that say we want closed sessions before 6:00 PM, then we would get to the next question of if you would like that integrated into the municipal code or if it just stays as the status quo with the mayor calling special meetings.
I would like them before six.
I would like them before six.
I would like them before six.
So the next part would be, would you like staff to bring back an ordinance to make that clear? Or would you like to continue calling special meetings each time for?
I'd rather not call special meetings every time.
Okay.
I also would not. I would like to keep within the rules. With the order, the new ordinance, so that we were doing it within the proper rules.
The way you're doing it in legal's opinion is you're doing it within the rules.
Okay.
It's just different ways to do it.
I understand. I understand. I'm just saying that's how, I agree with that.
All right. I would have two council members for.
Change, yeah, I think you need a public hearing.
Present an ordinance to counsel at a future meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item six, continued discussion with cities' purchasing and bidding policies for goods, services, and public projects. I am municipal code chapter 2.44. I'll have Ms. Bonham. She's going to be doing the presentation.
Hello. So this was at the last meeting. And so staff had asked for direction or given direction to come back. I did one big, if you notice, your big. So you didn't have to read it three different times. We just did a comparison. I did a large comparison for you so you can see the difference. So the first one is basically the current purchasing policy, the finance committee direction given of 2024, which Dominic requested, and then the suggested purchasing policy that was brought to you last time. I gave a little brief history of the background of basically the purchasing policy is to help staff direct them on how to spend budgeted funds. That's one of the other items that I had made that if we add wording to that, because this is for budgeted funds, so this isn't something outside of the budget. This is for your budgeted funds. So as Michael had stated before, this policy doesn't save you money. That's why there's no fiscal impact because the money's already, when you guys approve your budget, that's when you approve what gets spent. So this does not help you on that end if that's one of the concerns.
Questions from council?
Yeah, I got a few. I met with Michael on this as well. I recommend everyone meets with Michael. I already said that. So he explained some things to me about, yeah, you're, you know, I like it when he says, yeah, you're right, Dominic. You're absolutely right. But because of the way it's run and the operation and the staffing and everything else, you can't always do everything that you probably should do if you had all those things in line. So so having said that, I thought, well, you know what? Let's let the new finance manager go with a policy. However, I don't like the no PO, I mean, the the three informal bids whenever possible. I hate that. I won't compromise on that. When you're going to spend 20 grand, you get three bids. When you spend 50 grand, you're going to get three bids. I mean, whenever possible, strike that. So I would just like free informal bids, you know, over, you know, like, you've got a giant gap here, $250 to 20 grand. That's a big, you know, that's a big swing right there. I mean, that's a huge, you know, gap. I'd like to see, whatever, 250s to say 10 grand. Where then, all I want is, I want POs whenever we can get them because we have to keep an eye on the money. We have to keep an eye on someone just going out. And, you know, we don't always know that someone's going to check the budget before they make a purchase. You know, we don't know that. There's a whole bunch of things in the policy that we don't do. You know, where's all our list of bidders? Where's all their qualifications? I mean, I don't want to go on and on, but I did with Michael. There's things that we're supposed to do now that we don't do. Okay? So we're just trying to keep it tight, that's all. Because what I don't want is two years down the road, things go bad. And then everyone goes, well, how come you let this happen? How come you never had any oversight on that? Which is what happened if you read the 2010, 2011 grand jury report. They blame the council and they blame the manager. Okay? That's when the inter-fund borrowing happened. Wasn't on my watch, Larry. Sorry to disappoint you. I recommend you do read that report because they're going on about lack of oversight, no audits. Here we are again. And the whole point of this was to just keep things tight. So if you do the bidding, you know, mandatory bids, not whenever possible, then, you know, I'm good with your recommendations. The end.
In Michael's, in your presentation, you sort of hammered that bureaucracy was a problem. The government put those codes in place for a reason. To make sure taxpayers got the best rate possible, that they got a competitive bid. And there's penalties if we go outside the government code. Someone can sue us. Someone can walk in and say, hey, I didn't get a chance to bid at that job and file a lawsuit. The codes are there to protect the taxpayers. They're not there to make it easier and quicker for staff. So, you know, you signed up for the job to work for a municipality. And to continually bypass RFP, the RFP process, sooner or later, that's going to bite us. We don't solicit for an approved list of contractors. If we did that, we wouldn't, we could just go to our approved contractors. And all three of them or how many can submit a bid, but they're pre-approved. It's just as quick as sending out an RFP. But as far as the big jump in approval, I'm just, you know, council is is oversight. That's our job. And for the amount of funds that we continue to open up and spend, I know you say it's budgeted, but we need to see what we're buying. And is it, we need to make that decision. So I don't, I'm not in agreement with bumping the city manager, I'm picking on George, city manager's approval from 15,000 to 100,000. I feel we need to see what's happening, especially given the financial report. And I'm a little shocked that our finance manager would be okay with no POs and so forth. POs track the job. So, anyway.
Councilmember Mitchell?
I'm kind of in between. Certainly have to be following and see. We've got the staff saying that they're dealing with a lot of red tape and inefficiencies and running, knowing that we're policy more than directing each department. George, that would be your oversight as well. We oversee you. You oversee the pieces. So for me, it's a trust issue. Do you trust the staff? And do I trust you to manage the budget and them? And I do. Or you wouldn't be sitting there. And I wouldn't be so confident in the staff that I respect. So I'm I can understand wanting to get formal bids and proposals when possible. They certainly could put together some city contract, some folks that are pre-approved. But I do think we need to get rid of some of the red tape so you guys can do a job more efficiently and better.
Vice Mayor?
I hate to be a copycat, but I see where I agree with what Jack has stated just now. It's a while. I don't really have anything more than that. I'm still learning this as we go. I have some experience with this, a good amount of experience with it when I worked with the state of California, Mill Creek. But as far as the city part goes, I'm still learning. But I definitely want to reduce red tape. There's no question about that. And as long as we know it's a budgeted item. And so that's kind of where I stand at this point. I'd like to make, eliminate red tape. Make sure we give staff direction that we all agree on so that they know what all of us are thinking instead of having to guess. So.
Well, the key word is it's already in the budget. We already approved it. So that's how I feel on it. And if people want to know the reason why we, the government pays $10,000 for our toilet seat, this is why. There's so much red tape. And I work in a business where, when I worked for U.S. Energy, they made us do POs on everything. And I'd buy a box of bolts for $5. And I kept telling the president of the company, I said, don't make us do POs on anything under 50 bucks. And he didn't understand it. So I went back with the bean counters one time, and this was 10 years ago, and it was costing $113 to do one PO. By the time I went through all the staff, went through the bean counters and let everyone take a look at what we were buying, it is not worth it. I don't know what it cost here. It's probably 10 or 20 bucks, but it's a pain. If it's already budgeted, I'm totally for going with the suggested purchasing policy.
I just want to mention one thing also real quick is that in situations we want, when it comes to red tape, we want to be able to expedite not only the ability to purchase something, but more importantly, the ability to get what items we need quicker. Something, you know, if we need something quicker, we can get them.
And just for clarification, so this item is actually not an agenda, an action item tonight? Because it does have to come back with the public hearing and go through that process to change the code. So this is like final directions to staff or more directions to staff? So what we're looking for is to kind of firm up what exactly you guys want so we can bring it back for that public hearing.
Okay. Any other comments before I open up public comment?
Yeah, I got a quick one. Just going to give you an example of why oversight's necessary. And this is the tractor we bought, I don't know, four months ago. So we had staff who came to us, wanted to buy a tractor, was in a budget, or actually wasn't in budget, but there was money there for it, wanted to spend, I don't know, $70,000 on a used tractor with 20,000 hours on it. Okay, we ended up, after some back and forth, bringing it to the council, we ended up buying a brand-new tractor, brand-new spanking new tractor for two grand more. Okay, we would have bought the old tractor had there been no oversight. Okay? Now, that's one reason. Second reason is, I'm okay with the POs, but I'm not okay, so my direction is not okay with the no bids. So, you know, that for me is not a deal breaker. You know, POs, I don't care. Bidding, I care. So that's where I'm at.
We're removing the wording whenever possible, correct?
Yes.
Is there consensus on at least that?
What section are you referring to? We've got three.
So if you look at the suggested one, the second one, it says bids proposed, this is how it's currently written. So we just left it that way. Bids proposed whenever possible. If you look at the 251 to the 20 on option B, on the item two, it says whenever possible, and he's saying remove that wording.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney on that. I'm getting formal bids for municipalities.
For public works projects, actual construction projects, those are subject to stricter state requirements. When it comes to services and goods, that is more for the locality's discretion. So that's when you would be looking at this ordinance more. But when staff is drafting this ordinance and bringing it to council, certainly we would be interested in working with them to make sure everything's in compliance with any requirements. But. But that's how I break it down is services, goods and services, more local distraction, discretion.
So you're saying on, on, let's say, um, a contractor, we don't need to put an RFP out?
For a public works project?
No, for services.
Service, uh, not necessarily, not necessarily it would go to the local ordinance. There may be some state requirements out there. We can check on that, but it's this process.
Federal funds?
Well, now you're talking about other requirements, sure.
And in the ordinance, as it currently written, if you guys read the ordinances and all three of them still have it, there is a whole section on the federal funds and how, um, you get into the prevailing wage and all the things you have to follow for that.
I would say council is acting with its, within its discretion here of thresholds and procedure for each threshold. And if something violates requirement, we'll, we'll note that.
Open up the public comment?
Just adding a little bit of clarity, uh, much like the attorney just went over. Um, you know, I've jumped around different levels of municipalities and POs are not uncommon. There, they can be bureaucracy, but they're not uncommon. Um, adjusting these limits as suggested are closer to in line, uh, based on the level of what's needed by that situation. And that's what they've broken out. As far as the bidding thing is concerned, I mean, all of you are right in your own ways. Uh, in a lot of situations, as Ms. Lefane has brought up, it's, it's for legal requirement to go out and get bids. Sometimes, uh, whether it be job postings or particular projects, but not necessarily all cases. And I ran into all those exceptions as they existed at the county, state and federal level. It's just depending on the project and the laws behind the money behind that situation. So it's my understanding that the whenever possible is not a matter of convenience. It's a matter of are we square with the law? Uh, of course, in any situation where we can get reasonably quick competitive quotes, even when we're not legally required to, we'd want to. It'd be smart to get competitive quotes just to see that we're getting the right numbers. So we're not looking to, uh, get rid of the process as a whole. It's just simply make it closer to where it is in reality. And then as far as, uh, Ms. Lefane also brought up, um, yeah, it's the job we signed up for when it comes down to doing the POs. And no one here coming before you is complaining and saying, man, I really hate doing these POs. What we're saying is, there is a point in which you are paying an admin cost that starts to be a drain that's unnecessary. And these new operating levels as presented, maybe with some tweaking based on your guys' guidance, brings us closer to being less frivolous with wasting money doing admin duties, while still keeping you guys in a position of oversight, keeping us in accountability.
Well said, Michael. Thank you.
It wasn't long ago, you guys were on a forty-eight thousand dollar flow meter. And a councilman kept questioning a person about it wasn't itemized. He had everything down. And I got kind of depressed. I never said nothing, but I am now. This is ridiculous. The guy had a bolt written down. You want to know how much a bolt and the nut is and how much the gasket is? This is getting ridiculous. The guy had forty-eight thousand dollars for the whole project. And that's what it costs. You don't need to itemize it out and have the price of every little piece. You're gonna take a bid on a bolt and a nut? That's crazy. Why have this guy stand up here for half an hour doing that? That's strictly, thank you.
Yeah, it was me. Contract, contract complaints.
Mitzi Windly, um, the thing that I'm not sure of is when you go to get bids, I know in the past, Janice told me if I'm right, there's been things that we couldn't even get free bids on. Right? I mean, and secondly, nobody gives bids anymore for free. You gotta pay for them. If I have electrician come look at a house, they charge me now. They don't give a bid. So I don't know about all the rest of it, but I'm saying to make three bids, you're gonna have to see how much they're gonna cost. And I know in, in older projects, we couldn't even get three bids for some things. So you can't require three bids if we can't get them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Close public comment? Oh, wait. Oh.
Oh, I'm just.
Okay.
And ready for you guys to tell me what you want.
Okay. Any other questions or direction? Someone want to?
Give it direction.
Do you have enough to move it to the next level? That's the question.
Do you need specifics?
Well, we need specifics if you want an ordinance written.
So far, what I've seen from you guys summarizing, uh, besides general concerns, is, uh, changing the, the operational B cost from the two hundred fifty-one to ten thousand versus two fifty-one, twenty thousand. And the wording around the three informal bids. Uh, that one, I think we have a little bit better clarity on and we know what each other are talking about. Yeah, that one's the third tier is when it starts to move on. Um, so we could, uh, as long as we square it with the legal language is what I'm concerned with on that one. But, uh, I, I've taken note of what you guys said about, uh, your B for operational change. Um, that, that's all I have for notes, is those two situations. If there's anything else we need to note, for further direction, I can notate it and we'll have it ready for.
I would, I would like to see council approval on fifty to a hundred thousand.
I want to leave it the way it is.
So hang on, save an argument here, which is, man. It does say on that one that it must have a city contract. So that would be when the council would get involved. Is that correct, Josh? So the council would have an opportunity to weigh in on the fifty to a hundred via the contract process?
Yeah.
Is that, is that correct? So the city manager would actually be working with the city council on that? Is that correct?
That wouldn't, if it's, if council specified, that means the contract has to come to council for approval.
Right. Says plus city contract, and that can only happen with the council. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
They need council's authority to go into contract.
And I, I'd like a definition of informal, what, what the city staff views as informal versus a formal bid. Informal is over the phone, right?
Uh, not necessarily.
Email.
It's more of, um, a soft bid. We're hoping that they don't come out and charge us in the process of giving us a bid.
Has anybody charged you in the last year?
That's not something that I've been in direction of, but obviously you've heard tonight, it happens with some people. In our case, we ask around and then we put it out for bid and we get some soft numbers.
I think one of the things that the council should take into consideration is that because of the cities of Ione's past track record, a lot of contractors and businesses, they don't want to give us any bids. They don't want to do business with Ione because of the difference. I'm just giving my opinion.
I'm gonna dis.
Don't interrupt, George. Continue.
Well, again, I, I think that's one of the things that you have to take into consideration is that in the past, when you talk to vendors, when you talk to contractors, they say they'll never do business in Ione because it's just too difficult. They make it so difficult. They make it so, you know, uh, uh, obtuse that they don't want to do it. It, it, they, they can find other jobs anywhere else, but it doesn't make any sense. So that's just my two cents that I talked to a lot of people and a lot of people won't even do business with Ione anymore, primarily because it's just not worth it. I want to piggyback on that real quick, and that is that on the state level, getting bids where, um, they look at, they'd say to me on the phone, are you kidding me? You know, I've given you ten bids in the last three weeks or three months and I haven't won one of them. It gets to the point where I'm lucky if I can get one competitive bidder when, uh, when I was working for the state. So there has to be some language there. I don't know language or what, but there has to be some wiggle room there.
Well, back to, um, Ms. Lefane's, um, question on what the difference between the informal bids. It's not just, um, an email. It can be something like, um, with Park and Rec's example where they go out and walk the fields. It's not the full RFP process to where you notice it for a month and then you receive your bids and then you, so it could be a walkthrough. They could give you a bid. They can email it to you. You can call them on the phone, like very similar to like, um, a smaller piece. They might give you three quotes from three different companies where they email it to you and you have the information. So it can happen in a lot of different ways. It's mostly not going through that big RFP process where you're specking out all your design detail, then going out and then having everybody bid on it.
Um, quickly, the remedy to that is doing a solicitation as our current policy states of getting pre-approved contractors. When we had certain meet and greets, there were several businesses there that said, we never get a city job. They always go to friends of council members or friends of staff. Golden Suns was one. Um, so I respectfully disagree. I think if the city made an effort to market that we are looking for bidders, permanent bidders to have on file, the process is going to go much quicker. They're pre-approved. We know what they can do. Um, and we have a list to go to right off the bat.
I think you do both.
But I'll give you a, a typical example of what Ms. Lefane is bringing up is regarding the basketball courts. We had two or three qualified bids. And again, we were required to go back to get an RFP. Now, as a result of that, we, the, uh, the, the people that bid, they won't even return our calls anymore. So again, I mean, this basketball court has taken eight years. And this is just another example of why we had to go through the process. We had, you know, two qualified bidders to bid on the project. But then the city required us to get an RFP. We can't get those other two people to come back. So at, at this point, it's at a standstill because we can't get bidders. So that's just to give you an example.
All right. So far I've got your notes. We just need a consensus on what topics that were brought up, uh, you'd like us to lean into, to bring back up next time.
All right, Michael, I did just represent an option.
Sure.
Uh, if council wants to wait another meeting, they could bring back a similar table, incorporating the notes and direction from council before bringing back, and or, and ordinance is a lot of work to bring back and prepare. Uh, they could bring back, you know, another summary of what the key terms are and the changes based on the feedback from this meeting before actually going to draft and prepare an ordinance.
I would just, just bring this back. Don't bring back the. Make it easy.
I'm good with that. Is anyone else good with that?
Does that work for staff?
That won't be a challenge for us.
So what are we bringing back?
Just bring it back this graph with the changes that were.
But is there consensus on those changes before we leave? I don't think there are. Yeah.
Well, the changes was, so I mean, B was gonna be two fifty to ten thousand. C was gonna be.
Everybody agree on those changes?
No, we don't have consensus.
Do we? Okay, this.
I wanted to leave them the same, but I think everyone else was on the same consensus.
I mean, we, uh, have gone from five thousand, what it is now, we propose to twenty thousand. So I, I'm at ten. So get a consensus, ten or twenty.
What, what do we squander on B?
B, on the last one.
Instead of going two fifty to twenty, I'm, I'm suggesting two fifty to ten on that one. And then ten to fifty on the next one. But honestly, I don't care. Move on.
Yes, it's.
Feed it to Deb.
Yeah, I mean, what's ten thousand really? I mean.
Nothing to the taxpayer, nothing.
Yeah, you know, you know what's weird about that, wanting to spend money on property. Um. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, I, actually overall, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm fine with what we're suggesting, but, um, so that's kind of where I'm at. So I, I don't really see a, a need for changes when it comes to the dollar amounts.
That brings us to?
I'm fine where it's at.
All right. Uh, I'll put in the caveat of we'll make sure we're cleaned up with the language when regards to this PO, uh, sorry, the, um,
B.
the bids. So we're very clear on that.
Yeah.
But we'll move forward with this consensus.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Okay, so we'll be brought back as an ordinance since there's no changes. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Just making sure.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, moving on to item seven, discussion of sewer line responsibility of homeowners. Find it, George?
So it was requested this to be put on the agenda for discussion only. At present, the homeowner is responsible for sewer repairs from their house to the sewer line. A hypothetical situation has been brought up where if the sewer line is on the other side of the road, it would, the cost would be prohibitive for the homeowner to cut through the road to reach the sewer line. So this was asked to be on council for discussion. So.
Yeah. So do you want to start, Jody, or you want me to, or?
Well, you got the history on it, but I have comment also. I'll try to be brief because it is getting late. I want to keep people here as long as we have to.
So, yeah, I, I tried to bring this up years ago. So how it used to be is all the cleanouts for the sewer were at the property line. And you were responsible from your house to basically your property line. When they started building the houses over at Castle Oaks, they started putting the cleanouts at the house. And then they, the city decided, well, we can't go on this private property to clean a sewer line if it's out. So let's change the ordinance. And I think it was in ninety-seven, somewhere around there. Let's change it to where landlord is responsible from the house all the way to the main connection. Well, that sounds, sounds fine and dandy if you are on, let's say, the east side of Preston Avenue where the sewer line is. If you're on the opposite side, you've got to get a permit through Caltrans. You got to go through all this stuff, which will never happen. You'll, you'll lose your house. So, but if the city owns the right of way, they can just call Caltrans and the job gets done. And this has happened many times on my side of town where it's not a huge deal. It costs you a couple hundred dollars a year to clean out that little section. But at some point, something bad's gonna happen on one of these state highways where the sewer line's on the opposite side and someone has to pay to rip the state highway apart. So I would like to try and put it back to how it used to be to where the landowner is prop, is, is liable from their house to this, to their property line. That's what I would like it to be. So that's why I'm bringing this up.
Yeah, I asked to have this on the agenda. Um, I'd like to see if maybe we can, uh, agree to have, do like a staff assessment. Kind of look and see the overall condition of how things are looking. I'm, I'm for this, uh, looking into this deeply because, um, I think there could be some liability issues on it, the, the old L word again. But also I think it, uh, it is, um, it's quite expensive for people, um, when we're having to, uh, go through an area that was once done by the city of Ione. The, the city staff used to do this for years. Like, I guess it's on ninety-seven. And I can remember them being out there, you know, doing it as needed. But, um, I, I think we should look at this and maybe even see what other local city policies are like. But I, I prefer to see us going back to it. So anyway, if we can do like an assessment on it, it'd be great.
Would this be on new homeowners?
All, everybody.
Everyone, everyone.
So, hmm.
Uh, I'll go next. So first of all, I'd like to see that change in ninety-seven because I always hear that the things were all this way and then ninety-seven to change. Um, I live at Castle Oaks and there's a cleanout at the end of my property line. And too bad Elmer isn't here. I mean, I think Mitzi, um, if you have one at the end of your, but there's, there's. Right. Yeah. So there is a cleanout there. So what would need to hap- I think if the city treated the homeowners fairly. When there is a collapse under a highway or something like that, and the city took care of it, that we wouldn't need to be here. So what is being suggested is that the city will now take on the liability from the property line to the main line. Right? So what the city would need to know what the condition of those pipes are before you took, you took them in because they might all be terrible.
They are terrible. That's why the city changed it to make the people pay for it.
Mister attorney, we're not supposed to interrupt each other when we're talking, right?
Right.
I mean, I'm supposed to say what I say. I didn't interrupt him. Okay, so I'd appreciate it if. At this forum, it's not, it's not a workshop. I get to say my comments and then everyone else gets to say theirs. So. If the city is going to take on that liability from the home to the main line. That's going to increase the cost to the city for operating sewer system. So that needs to be. Put into the rate study that we're, we're currently doing. The city would also need to camera all of those lines because you can't just take. Every single line in the city that's, you know, a hundred years old and now that's on the taxpayers of the city of I own. The. I think that usually the only problem, I mean, what, Justin's here, what kind of problem can happen between. Your property line and the main line other than like a road collapse and now, because it's usually on the homeowner. I mean, nothing else is going in that line other than what comes out from the homeowner. Now, if there's a tree root or the road's old and it collapses, then I think the city should, should fit, pay for that and fix that. But to blanketly say, we're going to take care of every single lateral in the entire city of I own, I think that's just. Fiscally irresponsible. And it would, if we are going to do that, then we need to know what we're taking. And know what that cost is going to be before we, before we do it. Because it's going to increase the cost. Because that's miles and miles of pipelines that we currently are not responsible for. So those are my comments.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on a second. Any other council questions? Discussion before we get Justin up there?
No, go ahead.
Okay, Justin, come on.
To my knowledge, they were camered back in two thousand and eleven. We had a full, you know. CCTV project done. That's what I've heard. I think it was from a previous council member because I went to his house because his lateral went out to the main. Something was wrong there. And because, you know. You can, as a wastewater operator, I used to run a collections crew. If you don't see the lines on your maps, you know, you ought to. Before even vice mayor, you even brought up the ninety seven thing, like, you know, you can just tell by maps like what you're responsible and what you're not as an operator. And so. Again, the, the, what you were saying is true, like a lot of these lines are made of clay and especially in this area. The integrity of them are probably not great, but if we have these CCTV videos of when it was done, you know, the project ten years ago, we should take a look at it. I would recommend, you know, immediately and to, you know. Allow me to purchase a camera so I can start to help out residents in that way. You know, it's, it's, it's an investment. I can use it for, you know, many other causes throughout the plant and throughout the town and, you know. Give the taxpayers, you know, a bang for their buck. I come out there and I know what I'm doing. I can sit there and camera a line. It takes me five minutes and I say, hey, this is what's going on there. Until you guys figure out what you, what you want to do. So that's, that's like my immediate recommendation for the, for what we're talking about here. Do you have any questions for me? About this?
Thank you, Justin.
Okay.
Okay, well, hold on a second. We haven't noted up public comment yet. You're all right. Any other discussion? Okay, you're good. Open up for public comment.
I don't understand why a property owner should be responsible for the lines past their property line. I mean, I see it on Shakeley Lane all the time. Those lines plug up. And I, I just don't understand. It's not our property. Why are we responsible to take care from our property line out into the sewer? Yes, I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
One twenty-five North Royal Segal Street. I bitched about this ever since they passed. The city put my sewer line in and may I mention it only cost me a hundred eighty-four dollars. I made it to the property line. And the building inspector, they take care of the rest. Dave Kohler put my line in, Frank Marhefka. Dug it up. So why would I be responsible for something the city put in? And I've talked to lawyers about this. If I had the money and it happened, they would make you fix it anyway. Because they put it in, I didn't. And the thing is, they ran this hybrid back by the last company. And how many houses did they blow in? I was licensed to run one of them things. They run about thirty-two hundred pounds of pressure. And if you get on the internet, look. They eat the lines up on these old terracotta pipes. It eats the liner out of them. And how many times did they run that thing and it blew up peoples in a. My neighbor, it blew up in her bathroom. When they ran the wrong way with a high pressure line because they ran it too lazy to go down to the next manhole and run it. They ran it down and blew it back the wrong way. And they come up in her bathroom and the city paid dearly for that because she called the state. Hazardous waste people because she knew who to get a hold of. They got that fixed instantly. And I just don't believe, because I work for the state, the city can go dig up that sewer line. And that highway anytime they want. He don't need a permit. He don't need nothing. And if you take Preston and where Andrea lives, that's seventeen feet deep. And I don't know if you know that Sarge's house up on Craig Street, I think it is, across Waterman Road. It didn't. And the city bailed him out because it was like fourteen feet deep. In the state highway. It would have broken. You got to get a license flagger. You got to get a bond. You got to get all this stuff. To work on a state highway. It just don't go get one and the city can work on their lines without a permit. So I think it should have been the city's long. It was when I built my house and they changed it. And like you said, running, there's all those houses over here, the city put it down. In nineteen, what, fifty-three, forty-eight, I believe, when they put the sewer in. And you're trying to make them responsible for it.
No, no, they're already.
They're already responsible.
Thank you.
Said something in ninety-seven.
Any other public comment? Are you coming up here, Andy? You need to sit closer to the podium. You take up an hour every meeting waddling up to the podium.
You know, I think the city should be responsible from the property line to the sewer. Like mine is, is all good pipe, you know, it's Spring Creek, so I don't really worry about it. But I know all these other old homes, the pipes aren't that good. And like everybody's saying, if the homeowner had to pay for it, most of the people are on fixed income. So. I suggest someday you're going to raise our sewer. Put fifty cents for sewer repair. Because I'll probably never need it for, in my lifetime, but I'd still donate fifty cents or a dollar. To put into a fund. So when some retired people on fixed income, their sewer plugs up, the city could go fix it if you're worried about money. And I pay my sewer bill. Everybody pays their sewer bill. So the city should fix it. That's my problem. But I know over here, these sewer lines over here, when they put them in, I've seen them dig them up. Or how they did years ago, they just took the pipe, cut a hole in it, stuck the line in there. And then put like a little something around it and then put mortar mixed all around it. Well, over the years, a lot of times that'll just give away and then it just plugs the sewer up. So. Yeah, don't make the residents pay any more than we have to. We pay enough on sewer and taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Close public comment? So we need some sort of direction or bring back a different staff report or some more information?
So it's discussion only?
Because I do know the reason they did this. It's because the city did realize all the main lines are collapsing and they wanted the laterals off of them to, for the. Homeowners to pay it.
I'd like to see an assessment from the city on the, and the, a look at the liability that we're talking about taking on, a look at the pipes. Had. Said we could potentially get a camera. You could look at costs involved with. Looking at it down the line to come up with a proper solution. But the first thing we need is an assessment of what shape we're in and a hard look at the liability.
Coastland did that. If you look back in their data. I don't know how many years ago, maybe ten, something like that. There's assessment of all the sewer lines.
Yeah, well, that's ten years old.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to. Item eight, capital needs a de- update, Justin.
It is late and I don't know if my jokes I wrote down are going to land on here. I have a presentation, like a little video, of course, to show the. Horrifying pictures of the plant. I'm going to try to make this very, very quick, everybody. Hello again, everybody. I'm here tonight with Kathy Stone on Zoom to discuss a proposal for some plant upgrades. I was. Yeah, so let's see. I'm going to read my notes. So I just keep on track here. Butter up council so they approve more money. Let's see, I heard, yeah. Yeah, you guys are great, council. You guys are awesome. I enjoy coming here and presenting this to you. At the end of the night or in this pitch I'm giving here, Dominic, if you can. Talk about some of that money and get Michael up here and he can say that the money exists. That'd be great. Okay. So yeah, I need money, everybody. Money again, me, the money guy. I just am waiting for Janice now, so I'm kind of buying time until I can get the slideshow going. I don't, are you, there's no slideshow? Oh, no. Okay, I'm lost now, guys. This is it. This is it for me. Okay. So what I came here to show you tonight was I had some sand filters, right? There's these sand filters of the plant. And I'll just read from here and just kind of tell you what's going on. There was six feet of sludge in these filters from, from previous years. Unknownly to me, when I arrived here. When you have too much blockage in your filters, the tertiary season becomes filled with issues like airlines blowing off. And water quality becoming incredibly poor. One other huge issue caused by prior negligence was a sludge sitting under there for years, releasing hydrogen sulfide. And eating through the concrete basin of the sand, thus causing cracks to form. And so when I went to drain it this year, discovering. This booby trap laid out for me, there was sand everywhere on the bottom because it just, the hydrogen sulfide just loves concrete. And ate right through there. So. One sand filter remains of the four usable. That means with the current condition, I will only be able to treat half a million gallons a day to supply that golf course. And as you guys all know, it's like over eight hundred thousand gallons a day in July and August to irrigate there. So. Back to me wanting some money. Here's a little packet. I'm going to actually ask for it back. Because as you see at the back, it's kind of complicated. I've spent a long time on this. I want to have my recipe book out. Yeah, it's a big number back. Let me get to that. I'll get there. I hear the gasping. Okay. So. My quote I just handed you included a total revamp, includes a total revamp. Of the existing sand filters with the latest upwards filter treatment instead of bottom. That will allow the lifespan of the tertiary plant to increase by another twenty-five to thirty years. In that quote, well, hey, Dominic, come on, relax over there. Relax. Get the guy a cough drop, somebody. Okay. In that quote, I have also listed replacing the current failing PLC. With a total PLC failure, we experienced complete chaos at both treatment plants. That's the wastewater and the tertiary. None of the equipment no longer communicates or gives off alarm warnings. So that puts public, you know, health and safety at risk because you, you figure a lift station goes down and I don't get alarmed on it. Now you got sewage all over the road and that's not good. Any questions so far? You guys have this big proposal now in front of you. You got any questions? Come on, Dominic.
I'm trying to find the humor in one point nine million.
Oh, you'll find it somewhere in there. Just keep reading through. That's why I itemized it this time for you. So you can look at all the things. Yes, it is itemized. Come on now.
Discussion only.
Let's see. I got brackets right there for you. Okay, okay, okay. All right. All right. So I've given you that. So with that being handed out to you guys. Now you're going to see what. See, I'll move it quick. I'm trying to get out of here. I'm trying to get us out of here.
I suppose he wants this in advance too.
I know. Sorry, buddy. So they just got a really big number for me to do these upgrades, right? And what I just handed them was a. Basically the CIP list from the engineers. And we all know that the engineers are super smart and they get everything right. And so they have in front of them a sand filter upgrade that costs three point zero nine million. And I have three projects under my bid I just gave them. It's going to be saving a million just on the sand filter part of it. The CIP information was a collective of information put together by the engineers. They took bids from many contractors, including the previous operation company Perk, and put these numbers together. That means we have given you a quote for two. Okay, I'm just making sure I'm not throwing numbers out. Two and a half of the projects listed and still come in two million dollars less. And two years after inflation has skyrocketed prices for everything. So it's just, it's the contractors that I, you know, I buy equipment from, you know, I get to. I source, you know, I've been doing this for a long time. I'm able to source it through companies I worked with a long time. It makes a difference when, you know, the company I work for, like Waterstone, we can do a lot of the work in-house on top of, you know, working with contractors. And being able to source the parts ourself, all those brackets and nuts and bolts. So let's see. And that's a big part of why we're so much cheaper is because of, you know, the knowledge and know-how there. And let's see, oh, let's see what we got. Sky is falling approach. Sorry, it's always a sky is falling approach here when I come and I apologize for that. But you know, it's just what we inherited. There was a comment made back in December when I was listening and I was sick at home. By a previous council member that, you know, it's always like Waterstone's here and it's, it's, everything's on fire. It's not that. When I got here, it was like, we got to get a tile twenty-two done, you know, and, and you got to get all this new equipment to do this tile twenty-two. So what did we do? We hustled and did it. The engineers and the contractors, they had the time, said this can't be done for another year. We got it done and now we can complete this tracer study whenever the engineers say they have the time to do it. So. With George's help, we are just pushing forward and unfortunately, this is a big part of it right here that I'm throwing in front of you tonight. And I will say this, I know this is a big number I'm presenting you all with today, but just like Dominic has said. The prices are going to keep going up with every passing year, right? That's right. So we can have a more in-depth discussion if you guys want, but. Yeah, all in favor of Justin getting the money, say aye? Okay.
So this is a West Yost.
That's right. Yeah, so.
Shark.
Yes.
Okay.
So West Yost is submitting that for the rate study, of course, but that is a collective. Of what they've, was working with contractors and also with, you know, the previous contractors that were running the plant. That are all, that, those were all their numbers in collective of numbers. So you can see on there for the three of the big projects that. You know, we're going to knock those out for significantly less. And I just, I'm just here for direction from you guys. So let me know what, what you guys want to spend, you know?
I, I just have a few questions. Where are the regional partners?
Regional partners. Oh, so here we go. Yes, I want to talk about that.
I mean, just preface.
Yes, go ahead.
Last year in June, I think it was.
Yeah.
Catherine, basically. I was hoping she'd be here tonight so I could ask her directly.
Yeah.
But the, sort of the plan, once we rejected the. Item that came in April.
Yeah.
That was just feed I own task orders. Don't go to the regional partners. Let's wait till we're a little vulnerable. And then we'll bring in the regional partners.
Right.
Who will have a better opportunity to take advantage. Since our backs are up against the wall because the taxpayers of I own have continued to foot the bill on these. So. What, what are you doing or what is someone doing to tally up all of these improvements? That we've been making over the past year? That we've been making over the past year. So when it time, comes time to negotiate. They come to the table and, and foot a percentage of these bills.
Uh, yes, you know what, you know what my thoughts are on that? Hey, if you want me to Band-Aid and bubble gum those sand filters and.
I'm not.
No, 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 no. This is what I'm leading into, Allison. So if we, if we want to do that, I'd rather do the interconnect project. And that way you talk about leverage, people aren't gonna mess with I own no more. You want to send your water down here? Then you better pay your fair share. We're gonna use our own water and we're gonna use that on other people who take our water as well. So I'm totally game for that. You know, you just let me know what you got. Give me direction of what you want me to go out there and source for you, you know what I mean?
Well, I've just watched this.
Catherine is on Zoom.
I, I, I am on Zoom. Over the last year, task order, task order, task order, task order.
Yeah.
And so um, it's, yeah, it's a concern.
Yeah, I would love to make people pay their fair share, but we gotta get something going here to get some, some leverage on them, you know what I mean? And we'd really stick it to them. You guys gotta let me know what you want to do.
Did someone say Catherine's on Zoom?
So I, I am on Zoom. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just letting you know I'm here.
Any other questions, counsel? This was just an update. Um, you have to open up this public comment, counsel?
You don't.
Okay, open up the public comment. Any public comment?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Um, this has to be done. This, this. Treatment plant he's worked, tertiary plant, our water did not go in there when they eat it up. The prison's water went in it. How come the prison ain't paying for this? And another reason, they caused it. And, and another thing, Arsa, who's talking with Arsa? If they're not gonna build this plant, they're gonna have to, I mean, this is a bunch of money and it could bring ours up. Us taxpayers in I own, you don't know it. We ain't hooked up to the tertiary plant. We've been paying, I think last year about a hundred and. Hundred twenty thousand dollars. So since two thousand fifteen, if I remember right, we're looking at about one point two million dollars. Us people have paid for that tertiary plant, the water, the golf course. And a lot of people don't know that. And this is ridiculous. I mean, actually, if I had a lawyer, I could probably sue the city over this. They worry about liability. And they let it happen. This council's let this happen over and over and over again. Thank you.
Everything I've heard about that tertiary plant. I would like to know why these filters are the way they are. It's probably because the last operator never took care of them. Because if you take care of a piece of court, equipment, it'll last a long time. When Justin took it over, everything was broken down there, meters weren't working. And here we were paying him all this money and they were spending money on fixing and stuff. They never fixed anything. Well, I don't understand. Don't be mad at Jason. Jason is, is just trying to bring that plan up to where. You guys can give water to the golf course. It's not his fault. That the last operator ruined everything down there or never told us anything about anything being broken. I mean, and everybody thought the last operator was so great. And everybody used to say, oh, no, we gotta get rid of them. Everybody says, oh, no, they're the greatest thing. We will never get anybody. And look at what happened. Because the public knew what was going on. I didn't know, but I know a lot of guys that went down there that know that stuff. Told me that they weren't taken care of. And, and I really feel bad for Justin. Because it's not his fault. And it's, he can just say, well, we won't fix it. We just won't run it. You can't run it. The whole thing is, I, I'd like to have him explain why those sand filters are the way they are. I can tell you why. Just what he said, they never cleaned it. And if you don't clean a pit, you're gonna have a mess. Because at work, we used to have to clean pits and everything else, or otherwise we'd have a mess. New tanks, you had to clean them every so often. If not, you'd have a mess. So I think the big problem down there is maybe we should look at the last operator and make him fix all that stuff that he never fixed, that he charged us for. We paid him every month. And he was supposed to keep that plan up and it was in his contract. So he broke the contract. They never fixed nothing. Just poor maintenance. And you gotta keep stuff up, so it's either you gotta make a decision. One of these days, you either just shut that thing down and. The, the golf course can go dry. I mean, you're gonna make a decision. And like everybody says, taxpayers can't keep paying for that tertiary plant. When we're treating other people's water and we don't, probably don't get any money, so thank you.
Any other public comment? Close public comment? You got one more thing to say, Justin?
Oh, I'm grabbing my stuff.
Oh, okay.
Are you guys gonna, are you guys gonna give me like any kind of direction on what you want? Do you know what happened here? You know, I laid it on you guys tonight and uh, you know, just like we were talking about with contractors. You know, this, this, I've been working on this actually since April, since I got here. Um, they get kind of burnt out, you know, so. Am I gonna go back to tomorrow and say, hey, we might be doing this, this and that project or none of these at all, you know?
This was just an oral update, so.
Okay, okay, all right.
You already know.
George will be getting contact with you.
Right, George?
All right, moving on to item ten, approved budget amendment to spend additional funds to complete the various items needed and the title twenty-two report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council previously approved funds for West Yost to complete. Various tasks related to the treatment plant and regional board requirements. The Yost, they are very, very close to achieving all of the necessary reporting and tests required by the regional board, including the title twenty-two report. Um, Catherine Geez is, is online if you have any questions, but it is a. A recommendation that you approve this budget amendment to spend the additional funds to complete the various items did to complete the title twenty-two report.
I've read over it and um, I saw what has started to be supposedly the finishing up of the cleanup and abatement order. And I know as soon as the state gets it, they're gonna reject it because it's completely wrong. They went down the wrong rabbit hole. And it is not Catherine's fault at all. I believe she was given bad information. I have printed out every report. It's about three inches thick of exactly what happened down there. How it got put there to begin with, how it was cleaned up. And I've spoken, spoken with the water board. We're on the right path. Justin is spearheading it now, and I think Justin can finish it. Without um, another twenty-four thousand dollars. I don't know where this money all went. Other than the poor lady is going down the wrong path to try and eradicate this thing.
You mean, are you, when you say poor lady, are you referring to West Yost?
Yes. The.
Yeah, the cleanup and abatement order. They are requesting an additional budget request of ten thousand two hundred uh, for a total of twenty-four thousand. So are you saying that you wanted to eliminate?
Yes. I believe she was getting bad information from the wastewater committee. And that's one reason why I abolished it.
All right, and.
What's bad information?
Another question.
Hate to interrupt you, but what's the bad information that they were given?
I will.
You on the wastewater committee?
I will give a thorough report on what happened and you know, because I was the one that was part of that. I was the one that was supposed to be in charge of cleaning that out. I ran the company. The sewer ponds.
As. Our pub, I'm confused as to why you'd be cleaning out the sewer.
Because I was the superintendent of the company that rebuilt your sewer plant. And I was there and physically saw what happened. And what was directed to um, West Yost was completely inaccurate. That's not what happened. I have all the daily reports, I have all the pictures. I have all the stats of the water reports. I got the proof of before the sludge was hit on the ground. The gra, the groundwater had a baseline, that sludge hit the ground. It spiked of coliform and any other bad thing you can count. And uh, it took it about two years, I think, to, to clear out once it was finally removed properly. And I have all the reports. I'll do a presentation on it.
These came back to council for approval, so why wasn't it raised then?
Because every time I brought it up, I was censored in the past.
I, most of these came up last year.
So um, what we're working on is pond six and seven. It's got nothing to do with what Stacy's just talking about, but that's news to me.
No, it's a cleanup abatement order.
Yeah, cleanup.
Everything else is fine. I just want to remove the, the cleanup and abatement order of any other money requested for that.
Which is thirteen eight, right?
Twenty-four. No, that's a total twenty-four. Additional is ten-two.
For a total twenty-four. Well, but they've already spent thirteen eight.
Yeah.
Right, so we're talking about ten thousand two hundred. So look, here's the deal. If we don't get this done, because we're almost there. And I'm the one that complained about this just at the very beginning. I was the one that said. We don't need to do a title twenty-two report. We already have one. Um, and I gotta have voted, which is fine. That's the way it works. Um, but when you have. People writing articles and saying things that are, Stacy's not an engineer. I mean, I know he's super smart, but he's not an engineer. He's not a wastewater engineer.
You don't know that.
All right, if you are, then show me your credentials. But um. This is what always happens. We get near the end and somebody says something, usually it's Scully. But this time it's Stacy and we start all over again and we keep spending money and we keep spending money and we never get anything done. And so. We're very close to the end. We need to get it done. The fine will be more than what we're gonna pay West Yost. So I say let's get this done, even though I was against it at the start. But we gotta get it done or we're gonna get fined. So that's the choice we have. And to save ten grand, I don't want to slow this down. Um, this should have come up. Two years ago when he was on the wastewater committee. It always brings up at the last minute. So. Let's get this done. Let's get the money spent and let's get it done and get this CDO, which. Is for two thousand and three, just so everybody knows, before we start getting the blame up here. Two thousand and three, city got written up. The cleanup and abatement order on that sludge pile was recent. But everything else is two thousand and three and where's Gary Thomas? Because Gary Thomas built pond six and seven without permits, which started this whole thing off in nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand. And sorry, Larry, I wasn't on the council then either. So I've been complaining about this for thirty years almost, okay? We're in a bad position, put in a bad position by the city council, the city engineer at the time. And we're just trying to get out of it now and going around and around and blaming people for. You know, who did what or whatever isn't helping. When, when Perk took over, two thousand and ten, they said the same stuff as Justice saying now. This plant's horrendous, it's all busted, needs all this money spent. And guess who ran it for fifteen years? The city of I own. Okay, so. Let's just move on, get this done. I said a year ago, let's get a, to see if we can borrow eleven million dollars or whatever it needs to fix everything for the next fifty years. And, you know, hopefully we can get to that soon. But we need to find out what we can borrow from my bank or whatever and get a loan and fix all the sewer issues. Because right now we just spending money and then there's more money and then there's more money and it just never ends. And things get more expensive. Every year we waste. That's it.
Any other counsel?
So, so just to clarify, this is a, a budget amendment for West Yost. Aside from yours. You're, even though you're named in here, it's not, it's not for you. Okay.
And Catherine Geez is on the Zoom. If you had any questions for her.
I mean, I, we've come so far and George, you say we're close.
We're very close.
Said it. I, I haven't gotten any updates.
We're very close.
I mean, this is kind of a drop in the bucket considering what we've spent. I don't want to spend any more money, but. God forbid, this comes back to us next month. Because it was just here last month.
Are we close? Like this is the last time they're gonna be asking me for money?
Maybe Catherine can ask that question. Catherine? Catherine, you can hear us?
Well, this, this will cover us um, for the city, for the title twenty-two report, the tracer study. The cleanup and abatement orders we discussed. The amendment to the waste discharge permit to allow for the change in point of compliance. Which increases the treatment capacity significantly, which is very much needed. Um, and then ongoing discussions with the regional board and the partners regarding the water balance. And supporting through that effort. And then there's uh, additional funds to provide updates to city council. To work with Waterstone on reporting issues. Um, I don't know if I mentioned the cleanup and abatement order. So, so it is a, it is a wide variety of items. Um, there is one major outstanding item that the city needs to address, which is the cease and desist order. Um, which there is a separate task order that we're working on that with and depending on. How the negotiations with the regional board over the next month or so shake out, that would be covered. But ultimately, there's a project out there uh, related to the percolation ponds. And the city council is ultimately gonna need to make a decision on whether you want to um. Move away from having percolation disposal, which means that you're gonna need to complete a study to evaluate. What facilities are required to replace the percolation ponds and then pay for that project. And that's probably a twenty to thirty million dollar project that you're talking about. The other option is if the regional board would agree, would be to do studies to evaluate what it would take to permit. The seepage from the percolation ponds and order to keep them, so you don't have to spend that money. So, but that study and those efforts cost money to complete. So all we're gonna be able to cover under what we're talking about right now is figuring out the path forward. And then once we figure out the path forward, the city's gonna have to fund that path forward. Um, and that doesn't necessarily have to be with West Yost, but um, there, there is a major issue there with those perk ponds and that cease and desist order. That the city has to move on one direction or another. Um, and that is gonna need to happen in the next year um, or so. Or less.
So this isn't the last time you're gonna come ask us for money.
No, this is so that the cease and desist order is, you know, I mean, that's, that's been, that's been sort of the crux of the major issues. We've, we've honestly been. Haven't even had enough time or budget to really focus on that because of all of the other. Issues that have come up. I, I think you guys have seen all these letters we've gotten from the regional board in the last six months. I, I've personally never seen anything like that before. With so many letters of, you know, this, now, now you need to give us this. Oh, this isn't good enough. Oh, well, we. We, once you do a water balance, now the water balance needs to address these other items and just keep throwing things at you. That is, like I said, I've just never seen the regional board do this before and frankly, they're, they're upset. They're really upset with the city of I own and. We're trying to demonstrate through good work and solid engineering. That you guys are putting the right step forward and trying to do the right things. And unfortunately, we're digging ourselves out of a hole. And that's, that's where you're at. And I, I wish I had better news for you on this. I really do. But I do see a path forward and I do see a light at the end of the tunnel. Um, and a big part of that is whether these percolation ponds are gonna stay or whether they're gonna go and how the city's gonna move on that. And there's a big negotiation about to happen with the state on that issue. They issued that enforcement letter in December and they're gonna be getting back to us in the next couple of weeks through the lawyer. Through the attorney at some X Simmons and Dunn as to whether they're gonna even entertain. Any options there or whether they're going to force the city down the path of just eliminating those percolation ponds. Which again, that would drive a huge project that's, you know, been estimated by others in the past, you know, to be in that twenty million dollar range. So that's, I mean, I, what I've been trying to do and based on the direction I've been given from council up to this point is trying to find a path forward that doesn't end up. At that project that we figure out a way to keep the percolation ponds and that's what we've been working towards. Um, but that, to be able to do that, that requires effort too. And right now, we don't even know if the regional board is gonna let us continue down that path. So it's.
How close are we, we two getting the, the tracer study started?
So the tracer study, so with the approval of this money, the tracer study, the title twenty-two report, all of that should be complete before the beginning of the irrigation season. And then the, the, that, that's the plan. We should have no problem doing. And then the, the, that, that's the plan. We should have no problem doing that. Uh, there's an approval process. Once we submit all the reports that goes through DDW, that is a little outside of our control in terms of getting it quote unquote, fully complete. But in order to, we can get all the reports done, all the work done to get it into their hands, you know, in the next three months.
Three months?
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 you, you know, you do the tracer study, you gotta get all the data back, you gotta analyze it, you gotta write a report. All of that takes time. But the irrigation season starts in April, so, you know, that's three months from now.
That's, that's as soon as you can get done?
Yeah, well, the draft title twenty-two report is going in by the end of January. The tracer study will happen following that. We have to get approval of the tracer study protocol. And then we can do the tracer study. So there's a timeline there that is outside of my hands, but the intent is to have it complete before the beginning of the irrigation season.
Okay.
What is the looming fine from the water board? I briefly heard.
So, yeah, so they, they issued a letter in December, um, that basically, uh, called out the city for several compliance issues. The title twenty-two report, the cleanup and abatement order, and the cease and desist order, all three of those. The letter indicated that they were intending to issue enforcement on the city and, and the, the wording of the letter was such that how, how they enforced and what they intended to do was directly dependent upon how the city responded to and completed the water balance memorandum that went in in December. We submitted that. It was a very solid piece of engineering work that, you know, again, outlined that you have plenty of treatment and disposal capacity at the wastewater plant, which I think was a huge step forward for Ione. Since that letter was issued, the attorney, uh, again, some Max Simmons and Dunn. So basically the letter said, reach out to our attorney if you want to discuss. The Simak Simmons has done that and she has not gotten a call back. All she's gotten back, at least the last I heard, which was, I guess, the week before last, was that, um, that, 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 that the attorney that had issued that letter was talking to various staff members at the regional board level to sort of define a path forward. We, in the meantime, we've had permitting staff who seem very willing and open to talk and meet with the city to talk about the cease and desist order and trying to get a permit for the percolation ponds. So it seems like we're not really clear where, where their position is right now. I think that the water balance memo that went in in December, like I said, I think that was a really positive thing for the city. It showed, you know, that you guys are not just blatantly violating over there, that you actually do have a treatment plant with treatment capacity. You actually do have disposal capacity. But we just don't know. It, it's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's, it's a little scary though, because that letter was, you know, indicated that there was, you know, a major enforcement coming. Um, and that's kind of why we're here, like with the cleanup and abatement order and the title twenty-two report and making sure that these things are being done right, being done, you know, with engineering stamps, hydrogeologists involved, you know, the professionals involved that they expect to see getting these things done and putting forward, you know, really good quality reports. So that's what I'm trying to do is to show that you guys are serious. And hopes that that will help mitigate these concerns that have been raised that you're not and that they need to issue a major penalty on you. But I, you know.
That Michelle Chester has an initial meeting with, uh, that attorney here shortly.
Oh, that's, that's good. Yeah. But I, as far as I know, we haven't heard any specifics on that. But part of this funding that we're talking about today will help, will be part of that, will allow us to like help you guys in any way we can to, you know, respond to anything that comes out of that process. I mean, it's generally a legal process. It's a legal issue, but there could be things we can do to support. So it's, you know, there, there's, there's a bit of an unknown here on, you know, where that's gonna go.
Speaking of unknown, George, where would this money come from?
From the wastewater fund.
From the wastewater fund? It's not there currently.
Sorry?
Well, this is asking for an amendment to the budget.
We were spent, she's already spent.
No, I understand that, but the money for this project for the one hundred and seventy-two thousand is currently in the wastewater.
Correct.
Any other discussion with council before I open up public comment? Public comment?
I don't know where they get their energy.
I want the attorney to have a talk with Dominic. You guys, I'm a little off of topics, but I'm not really, because he was talking about this. He accused Gary Thomas of building two ponds? You know, that's, that's not right. No city councilman should say that. If I'm talking to you, you can argue with me. I don't care. But if, like Larry Rhodes, I think he's mentioned his name twice tonight. And he mentioned, uh, Scully and Scully's not here. I'm glad he's not. Cause he gets mad. So I think the attorney should have a talk to him because you're open for a lawsuit. Especially when he said Gary Thomas built two ponds. Oh shit, he couldn't, how'd he build two ponds with his shovel?
Say that. I said he was on the council when it happened.
Well, no, you said he built two ponds. I'm just saying, you should not say that to the public when they're not here. And you shouldn't look at Larry and say, Larry, Larry, that's not right. I've been.
Larry blames me for all the things that happened.
I, I'm not, when he get, hey, when he gets up here to talk and blames you, you have a, you have a right. So the attorney's gotta have a talk with you about that.
Didn't A.R. Rhodes just do that? When he brought the flow meter up and said, let's sue Perk?
No, no, that's the city councilman. You can do whatever you want there. You want to bring a lawsuit against him, go ahead. But he's not to sit up there and say, yeah, Larry? Yeah, yeah, it's Scully? That's against the law as far as I'm concerned. Cause I've been to a lot of meetings and I've got up and set up and argued with them. But they never mentioned my name. They never said, oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. So I think the attorney and, uh, the mayor need to have a talk with him and the, uh, manager, because I'm not very happy about that. You know, he, well, he can say whatever he wants, but when he starts pointing to the audience and mentioning their name, that's not right. And the attorney knows that. I'm surprised you didn't jump.
I'll be happy to meet with the attorney over that.
Well, no, I don't want you to do it anymore.
And I won't do it anymore.
Well, I want the attorney to, to have a little talk with you about.
And I will have.
You do it all the time. It's just not tonight. But tonight you did it, uh, one, two, three, four times. So, you know, you're gonna end up having the city get in a lawsuit. Because you said that he built two ponds. He never built two ponds. I mean, why bring that up? That was a long time ago. So I think the attorney needs to have a talk with you.
Said that five times.
They're spending on this Yost thing, they spent, I think it's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think you could hook up the tertiary plant for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you do it as this maintenance. You got two lines there. All you'd have to do is put a pump on one. And I've been told there's already a valve on the Preston Pond line. So you could feed the tertiary plant that way. Ain't a rocket science. And where the pipe comes out of the tertiary plant goes to the, to the ponds for the Castle Oaks, you could tap into the so-called CCC line, which is there. And that would backfeed into the city sewer system and you could put the T in, connect it to the inner system to the ponds and run it through our irrigation system. And if you had clean tertiary water and proved it, I wouldn't be surprised that the Ranch of Rio wouldn't take every drop of water you got, because I don't think CDC owns that pipeline anymore. I think that's a bunch of bull. Just like Woodford Bottom. CDC does not own it. Indians do. So you could tap into that and I, I think you could do it all for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars easy. And especially if you hired some people that know what they're doing. Contractors. All it is is a pump and a couple of valves and a few pipes. It ain't rocket science. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Close public comment? Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the budget amendment.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Well, second.
We have first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 No? Eyes have it?
No.
All right, reports and communications from city attorney.
Yes.
Are you an eye on that one, mayor?
I was a no.
No?
So was I.
Okay.
Me and Alice have our no's.
Three to two? Yes. Thank you for your participation in discussion and closed session in today. Look forward to continue working with everyone.
Thank you. Um, reports and communications from city manager.
Well, like, um, Michael said in his report, the biggest issue facing the city of Ione in the future is, is is declining revenues. So that is probably our top priority in terms of figuring out ways to increase our revenues. And hopefully, um, we'll be able to come to the council here shortly with some ideas that we've been working on. But to me, that is the highest prior, priority for the cities, our increase revenues. And that's including potential, um, uh, sewer increase rates as including potential sales increases and and, and including some other projects that we're working on, but those will all come together here in the near future. So that is our highest priority. Thank you.
Thank you, George. All right, council member comments, committee reports and future agenda items. I'll start with you, uh, council member Allen.
Just wanna know from the city attorney, can public be banned from Zoom? That happened. And also can committees just be disbanded? You know, like the wastewater committee? Can they, and then you don't need to, I don't need to know tonight, but just what's the power of disbanding committees that have been standing for, you know, various committees? Do they have to be voted out or can they just disappear?
Council member LaFaine?
Those were, those are mine. The mayor doesn't have authority to disband a committee formed under, I believe, a resolution. And last year, council took a vote on whether or not to allow Zoom. It wasn't the mayor's decision alone. I think it's beneficial. Some people can't make it. So those are my own. Uh, economic development. I believe Jody is on economic development. That is a Brown Act committee, so there should be two members.
I am.
I don't think I'm on that committee.
Think you are, no?
Did away with it.
You can't, you can't.
I don't quite remember if I am or not. I don't believe I am, though.
Well, we're talking about creating revenues. We need our economic development.
Like county one. The county one.
We got two proposals from two very qualified companies to come in. They do this to rural counties. They're very successful. They come in and talk to you. They assess the area. They assess, it's all they do. And it doesn't hurt for them to come in and talk to we've, we've brought this up for at least six months, six months.
We, we did have them on the agenda at one point, but that meeting was canceled.
Yeah, the agenda didn't get posted.
Council member Mitchell?
No, I think you got three fire crews coming back very soon. Certainly appreciate their work down south. And if you see them, uh, give them a hug for a thank you.
Mayor? I too would like to thank the, uh, and very proudly thank the, uh, I own fire department, I'll say fire department. Uh, not only the firefighters, but their spouses and loved ones for, um, the sacrifice they make and also for what the great things they've done down there. Only thing, other comment is that May third, we're gonna have a home tour in Ione. Uh, having our tourism committee went to, uh, it's gonna do their home tour in Ione on May third. And I was told last time they came to Ione, that business was booming. So, uh, I'm a friend again.
And I have nothing, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have it. Good night. Thank you all.